Welcome to the July 26, 2022, 6:30 PM City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules of speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-dedicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions or requests, must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers shall be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three consent agenda items shall be limited to speaking for a total of 10 minutes, regardless of the number of items identified. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to the city council should be placed in the box on the table in the council chamber.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 10th, please?
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, second by Member Nelson. All those in favor say yes. Opposed? Minutes are adopted. City Manager.
Yes, Mayor and Vice Mayor and City Council, good evening. At the applicant's request, they would like to withdraw item 9C, and we'll need a vote to remove that from your agenda.
9C. That was Sweet Peas, correct? Okay. Do I have a motion to...I have a motion from Vice Mayor?
Second.
Second from Member Nelson. All those in favor of removal?
Aye.
Opposed? It is removed. Back to City Manager.
On to item 6A, which is Boards and Commissions, the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. The terms of regular members, Kristen Smith Rodriguez, Thomas A. Taylor, and alternate member Dave Menderneck expire on 31 July 2022. Regular members, Smith Rodriguez, Mr. Taylor, and Mr. Menderneck have all expressed their willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board for a two-year term that expires on 31 July 2023.
All right. Are those...I don't think we need to hear from them, but if anyone's here and wants to speak, I'm certainly willing to hear. I see none. I would then like counsel anything. It looks like you're ready to make a motion. Do I have any cards on this? All right, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I move that we reappoint Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Taylor, and Mr. Mandamick for a term of two years.
Second.
I have the motion for all from Vice Mayor. I have the second from Member Nelson. Roll call, vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passage unanimously. City Manager.
On to item 6B, the North Pervard Economic Development Zone Dependent District Special Board. Mr. Bartholomew Gatkins and Jennifer Taylor have expressed their willingness and desire to serve on this board as city council's appointee for an unexpired term to expire on 31 December 2023.
All right. And again, I'll go the way...first of all, counsel, anyone say before I go forward? I see none. I know at least one is here. Are the applicants both present? Yes, aye. All right. I know that Mr. Taylor's over here. If you would come up and just...well, hear from you. Introduce yourself. Okay, yeah. No, I don't see there's a light. There you go. Your name and whatever you want to say.
Jennifer Taylor. I live...I'm a Titusville resident, and I've just been part of the community for 30 years, served in many different roles throughout the community, and always toward the improvement of things that we're involved in. And the zone certainly has impacted our community in a positive way, helping us to grow and continue to change in good ways. And I'm just honored to be considered for something of this nature.
Well, having known you for many years, specifically through church, I know how hard you work. My question would be, what life experiences do you think would best benefit...be of benefit moving forward into the zone?
I've served in executive roles in the community as well, and am comfortable working at all levels of individuals with analysis, with skills of investigation to get the best answers for our community, listening and helping develop directions for things that are necessary. I have a master's degree. I have a bachelor's degree. I have certificates in specialty areas, and so I can use those as well as working with people of all different backgrounds. I know the role would be working with individuals that are on the board, but also hearing from our community and what they have to say and what their...you know, the way the funds would be used to help benefit our community. And community needs assessment, we did one through the North Pervard Coalition of Human Services. It was published in 2008. I have to say that we had...we had no money. It was a volunteer group, and we had leadership across the city and the area from many different levels that participated in bringing that information to fruition, and it's been used by some for the benefit of the community. And it certainly is something that was necessary and still beneficial. How we serve our community to help our families grow in a safe and solid way is real important to me. The children in this community need a lot. There's a lot of hurt. There's a lot of good, and how we spend those funds to benefit our community is important to me.
Well, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Member Nelson?
Jennifer, if you were chosen for the zone, would you accept any other role within the city?
I would consider it.
Okay. Like planning a zoning?
I don't know. Honestly, don't know.
Consider it.
I mean, I would consider it. I'm not committing to anything.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any...Member Robinson?
Yes. Again, I'm making note, I've had the opportunity to work with Ms. Taylor over the last 25 years in many capacities and working in the community. She has been there from working with those that are economically disadvantaged to those that are sick, including taking care of and making sure health services are available throughout our area of responsibility. So I am...I just wanted to state that and make it known that we have worked together on many, including spiritual projects as well, her role at the church as well. So...and Rotary and everything.
She stays busy. It's true. I just wanted to make that known.
She's been in the community, and I'd like one who has, after so many years, who have seen the problems of our community firsthand and still willing to take on it again from another capacity.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Go ahead and see. I understand, and I'm going to go to Vice Mayor on this one, one second. I understand that Mr. Gatkins is unable to be here. I'm going to let Vice Mayor speak to that, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. It's Bart unfortunately has that big C-word, and so, and we know all about that for sure. So he...wish he could be here, but he couldn't. But Mr. Gatkins, of course, is the chairman of the EDC right now, and of course, everybody knows him as the voice of Florida Power and Light. I've got to say this, though, because I know Jennifer also, and unfortunately, I must tell you this, that I was approached by Bart before I knew that you were going to put your name in the hat, and that made it real difficult for me to make a decision. So please know that what I'm about to do has nothing against you at all, and I'm happy that the councilwoman Nelson asked if there was anything else that you could do, because I think we could certainly use you in other capacities. So with that, can I make a motion?
Well, let me go around first, see, because we've only heard...really hadn't heard from anybody yet. Member Nelson?
Yeah. This is a...Jennifer, this is a hard one, and I've known you for, God, 10, 15 years. We were peanuts back then, though, right? So it's hard. Bart, I don't know that as well as I know you. On the other hand, he's...he has this business experience. He is the head of the EDC, so that makes it hard. But on the other hand, I don't want to lose you, and I know you can bring so much experience to us. That makes it hard. So, at any rate.
Member Stokel, you want to add anything? Because you're the only one hasn't yet.
Yeah, this is...I would just kind of echo. I feel like I know both of the candidates that are applying and just going through the resumes, and with this board, I will say I'm leaning towards Bart on this, but I feel like Ms. Taylor has a lot to offer and is completely vested in our city, so I would like to see her in some role within. But for the board, I'm leaning towards Bart.
All right. And again, I can't say enough about Ms. Taylor. I'd say I knew her 10 or 15 years, but she told me she's 25 or 35, and it probably really has been. Work and contribution to our community and others is in her family. Her husband is the same. Her family, her sons. I won't even go into all the specifics, because I don't know what...who should know what about where he's at, but he's a missionary working hard. And when we see him, he comes to church and gives the information about the ministry that he's doing, and it's just amazing what goes on in that family. They are constantly working to make people better. And I definitely feel like there's a place in our city and in our boards that I would really like to see you become a part of. With that, Member Robinson?
Yes, and I know Bart as well, and I've worked with him on numerous occasions as well. So when you've been in the community as long as I have, it's just always, you rub elbows with the brightest and the best, and that's what we are facing. So I just wanted to make that known as well, but...
All right. Member Jordan, Vice Mayor Jordan?
That's okay. Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I move that we approve Mr. Bart Gatkins to be a regular member for the North Pervard Economic Development Zone with a term to expire December 31st, 2023.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor. I have a second from Member Stokel. Roll call, vote.
Member Nelson?
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
No.
We have a 4-1 vote for, I would say, Member Gatkins, but Mr. Gatkins to move into the zone. And again, I don't know him as well as I know you, Ms. Taylor. I do know what positions he holds, and I've gotten to speak with him at many events, but I can't tell you how much I think of you, and again, bringing in the whole family. So I certainly hope that this is just a, you know, we didn't really even have a lot of time. I think it was a late entry, and I hope that that late entry turns into another entry where we can be, you know, understanding where we're going. So with that, thank you, thank you. And I know he can't be here because of COVID, but I certainly thank Mr. Gatkins and look forward to working with him on the zone, and I look forward to working with Ms. Taylor on a board that we can get her to say yes to. All right, with that, thank you so much. Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. That came up quick. Petitions and requests from the public. Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Stan Johnson, I'm speaking to you on many accounts right now. Just wanted to remind you that I'll be going to court next month with...meeting with some witnesses from the city and so forth about something that we have a dispute about, and that is this meltdown for over six months about the sketch plat and so forth. It is that it appears that the professionals here at City Hall have denied prescriptive rights and say that this property owner who has been over there for over 50 years on Mockingbird Lane did not have...does not have legal access to his property, and therefore, they have designed a relocation for his access based upon the fact that they say he has no legal access. So we're going to have a court, judge, and jury with people like Peggy Bisac, Brad Parish, and your fire marshal on that. And that has to do with this, and it has to do also with this thing right here that the city's approved, that cities approved an inlet, an inlet that is below ground that can't possibly work. Cities approved an inlet. So that's another issue. I cannot understand why the city would do that. But the thing I want to bring, the second thing I want to bring about is something I just talked to you about at the 5:30 meeting. That was 176 parts per trillion. I want to bring up the fact that I mentioned the fact to Mr. Stauffer of 176 part per trillion of PFOS in the Guardian. I don't think you heard me. I said I mentioned 176 and you...parts per trillion, and you said nothing about it. It's far more than five or six or three or 15. I mentioned 176 parts per trillion PFOS, and he wants to...he's recommended...he's already recommended that, first of all, is that the drinking water is safe, which was last tested in 2014, and he's also said...what else did he say? He said a lot of things, like, let's not test until June of 2024. Did I mention 176 parts per trillion? That's way above at least over, I'm sure, at least 10 states that selected numbers. I don't think you all heard. I said 176 parts per trillion. There's a bunch of states that have chosen 30 parts per trillion. I don't think you're listening to me. I'm also a registered professional engineer, civil engineer. Mr. Stauffer is not. Mr. Stauffer has sprayed people with piss and poop for I don't know how many months with your approval.
End on right there. All right.
I'd like another minute, please.
And I, of course, see none. Thank you very much. Next petitions and requests, please. I see none. City Manager.
On to consent agenda items. Counsel, are there any questions of any staff members that you have for any of the consent agenda items?
I see none.
Counsel, is there any council members that would like to pull any items?
Hold on, I see Member Nelson.
One question on D. I understand that we will be looking for a contract, and we'll bring that back.
So what this is, this is the final rankings, and then as we get work, we will issue a task order that goes to the company that you rank ordered, one through whatever.
Right.
And as work is accumulated, be on a task order basis, we will bring those task orders before council for approval.
Okay. Thank you.
I see nothing else. City Manager.
Clerk, are there any cards on the consent agenda items?
We have one individual that has signed up for one item and another individual on seven items.
So Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to read the titles of the consent agenda items for the record.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Consent agenda item 8A, approve the award of the contract for the construction of the Area 3 Well Field Electrical Project. Consent agenda item 8B, approve and execute the 2023 Park Avenue Christian Academy Resource Officer Program. Consent agenda item 8C, approve and execute the 2023...2022/23 Sculptor Charter School Resource Officer Program. Consent agenda item 8D, approve the final ranking and award for the Supervisory Control and Data Acquisitions Integration System Services. Consent agenda item 8E, appoint Planning Manager Brad Parish and Senior Planner Eddie Galindo as the city's representative and the alternate, respectively, to the school board's capital outlay committee. Consent agenda item 8F, appoint Planning Manager Brad Parish and Senior Planner Eddie Galindo as the city's representative and alternate, respectively, to the school board educational facilities impact fee benefit district advisory committee. Consent agenda item 8G, appoint Sustainability Planner Rachel Mueller and Senior Planner Eddie Galindo as the city's representative and alternate, respectively, to the Space Coast Transportation Plane Organization Bicycle Pedestrian Technical Advisory Committee. Consent agenda item 8H, approve and authorize the extension of the Echo Ecotec Consultants Incorporated Contract.
Thank you, sir. I see no questions here. So City Clerk, call the cards, please.
Looks like we have a Bob that looks like Koch, K-O-C-H, for item AE. Is that correct? Okay. Do you...would you like to come up and tell me which item? Okay, we're good. Okay. And then Stan Johnston?
You're the only one.
Stan Johnston, I'm expressing myself as a professional engineer, professional civil engineer, registered since 1976, working for the city and the county as a paid a good pay at, when I worked for the city. I was at the top. They couldn't pay me any more money. In fact, it's when they came for raises, they couldn't give me any more money at the time. So now, it appears that the city doesn't want to listen to what I have to say. Okay. So I'm a...I have a number of items that...but item 8A and H, I'm opposed to, and they are...collectively, they are under the...I believe they're under the auspices of Mr. Stauffer, a professional engineer. And I have numerous times presented to you this particular sign, the sign here about the sewage spray and so forth, and I think you remember that. And I've been criticized, saying, hey, Stan, you shouldn't do that. You shouldn't do that, because of a number of things. Is it...so here's what I'm going to do. Let me read this. It says...this is from Lizzy...Liz Lavette. She said...she was at the park. She said, "I had burning eyes, ears, nose, throat, severe headache, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea." Okay, that's a person. That's a real person. Okay? Okay, here's another person. This is Stella Bailey. She said, "I had days' worth of migraines." This is from your sewage...this is from your sewage spray, from Mr. Stauffer's sewage spray. Fact is, if you look at the fountain right now, it's just only about this high with from water, because it was way up here when we were spraying people and children and cars with this piss and poop. So I guess when we have sewage in the pond, we put the fountain up higher, because now we don't need to do this. Okay, all right. Okay, she says, "I had days' worth of migraines." This is...there was a lady that was talking here with the red hair. "Migraines, nausea, and other reported vomiting, headaches, rashes, and even a few..." A few people she knows of who went to the hospital with MRSA. Because you know, that sewage spill went into the river. It went into the river right there at Sandpoint Park and then over near at Space View Park. It emptied there, too. And just a few days ago, July 19th, Mrs. Nelson can point that, is that she was told that it was okay to keep those fountains on. This has to do with Mr. Stauffer. But Mrs. Nelson mentions that from FDEP, she got the word that it was okay to keep those fountains on because it, you know, it ticked the bacteria out, you know, mixing it with air and stuff. But you know, there was a, what's called a collateral damage. Like, for example, when you bomb a military base and you kill 100,000 citizens, you have 100,000 citizens of collateral damage. So in this case, we have collateral damage. We have damage, in other words, to people, the children and babies and women and children that go to the park. We kill the bacteria, but we make them...the other people sick, too. We have collateral damage, and I don't think that's okay. In fact, is I went ahead and put a request for records to Mr. Stauffer. Well, actually, it went to Brenda Evans, our records manager, and she sent...so Mr. Stauffer responded back to me, because I requested anything in writing about this FDEP report that was...that Mrs. Nelson was talking about on July the 19th and also in her Facebook. He reported back to me. He doesn't have anything in writing from this FDEP person. So we have all this collateral damage, which I was just reading to you about. The MRSA, the headaches, the migraines, the vomiting, the diarrhea, and so forth like that, but we got that bacteria out of that...some of that...out of that...using the fountain. Plus, we had the collateral damage. I also sent an email just the other day, because we have another...I got another email, and it so happens is that we had another sewage spill. We had another sewage spill, 175,000 gallons. And you know where that sewage spill was, but this time, it wasn't, you know, they got away with. Here's the letter from FDEP to Scott Lurie, City Manager. It says, "In April, the city released 175,200 gallons of sewage right into our river." I don't think y'all heard that. So I asked the question, is the...was the public ever notified of this? Mr...what's Mr. Stauffer's response? No response. I asked, "Did they notify the hospital?" No response. Of course, he didn't notify. I never heard about it. Does anybody hear about it? In other words, we have sewage spills. We don't know why they're sewage spilled, and it appears is what we...is what has happened is we deliberately put 175,000 of sewage in the river, and we put no signs up, and we notified nobody, and we notified no hospital, no nothing. People out in the river, they are susceptible to whatever Mr. Stauffer does. We're going to sewage people to death, and we maybe already have. Why do we do this? Okay, you're not going to answer that question, so here's some other questions. I said, "Was this sewage deliberate?" I expect it was. "Did you post warning signs?" I don't think so. Aren't you or city required to post warning signs? I believe you are. The Department of Health requires it. So you're breaking laws there. Okay? Which is common for the city. Did city notify Parish? Did city notify the public? Do you realize that raw sewage contains bloodborne pathogens and hazardous chemicals, and people have been treated for MRSA infections from water? Doesn't this sewage spill include Parish hospital waste and the waste from those nursing homes in that area? That's what was...that's what went into the river. How about that? Okay, here's another question. I understand that you do not have an engineering degree. Is that correct? That's Mr. Stauffer. I understand that when you received your college degree, it included no courses in sanitary engineering. How do you plan to notify health professionals in the future, such as Parish Hospital regarding sewage spills and the public? Does capacity have anything to do with this sewage spill? Is the capacity of our two sewage plants, 9.5 million gallons? Is the capacity of our two sewage plants 9.5 million gallons? If so, are we over capacity, and when, and when we have heavy rains during the summer and it peak demands during the day, does it, does it work or not? My experience is this way. I was working on a sewage treatment, a plant, package plant that's working perfectly well, perfectly well, and I go, Lauren, I'm making my observations, because I was, I was hired to do that, and I'm reporting to other people, so I'm, I'm watching it, and it was working fine. And I see the different patches and so forth in the sewage treatment plant, working, it had the sludge and so forth, the floating sludge and everything, and then all of a sudden, I understand, this, this sewage plant has got all, everything's working fine, and I'm watching it working fine, and then all of a sudden, all hell breaks out. And that's what I think's happening here. All hell breaks out. Demand came in, and the everything, and the water came in, people were flushing their toilets, taking showers, and it, by golly, it threw everything back right into the creek, into the canal in Florida. Red worms and everything like that, we had, it was just, it was horrible, I couldn't believe it. Of course, when I'm, I'm reporting it to, to my boss, and it, you know, it doesn't get reported, but that's, that's what's happening. I'm talking about, I'm a, I'm a registered professional engineer, and I'm telling you is that these things happen. These things happen. In other words, what you can do is you can, you can have your sewage treatment plant tested, 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 and everything goes fine, and you test it at the times when it's not high demand, and everything passes. So I'm, I'm warning you of this from my experience, not from my book, from experience. Okay, so, so, uh, I'm concerned about what has happened, and the city is not doing anything about it. Because here's, here's one, I, I don't think you've, you've really looked at. It says, "Titusville cover up barbaric crimes, spilling a million gallons of raw sewage into the Indian River and spraying people and cars, babies with park fountains of piss and poop for over four months." That's in the city of Titusville, this is where my hometown is, I've been here, I've been here over 50 years, I can't believe you guys did it. And it seems like, not only is Stauffer guilty of that, but, but Mrs. Nelson, too.
Thank you ten minutes, sir, thank you so much on the consent agenda.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you, I think I said that. All right, any comments or anything from council before I move to a motion? I see none, a motion on the consent agenda?
Oops. Consent agenda items 8A through 8H.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, a second from Member Nelson, roll call vote on the consent agenda.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
The consent agenda passes unanimously, City Manager.
Onto item 9A, which is ordinance number 262022, amending the stormwater management utility ordinance to clarify procedures, the City Attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
Ordinance number 262022, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the stormwater management utility ordinance, amending portions of Article 5 of Chapter 21 Utilities of the Code of Ordinances, amending sections 21-272, 21-273, 21-275, and 21-276 City Code, and creating sections 21-274, 21-277, 21-278, and 21-279 City Code to clarify procedures for modifying the stormwater utility fee assessment, providing findings, ratification, incorporation into the code, severability, and an effective date.
And this is your second reading, Mr. Cook's here to answer any questions that council may have concerning this ordinance.
Uh, Member Robinson?
Yeah, I, I understand that, I read through that again this time, is, I, I understand that this, we are combining some things to, to make it easy for servicing and for easier. I also noticed that there was some modifications, if you will, things taken out and shifted around in that process as well.
Yes, we incorporated some of the statutory provisions when you modified that had referenced the statute before, but we included them all, so it was easy to follow and, and clear. That's correct, and then we readjusted them to make it flow a little better.
All right.
Okay, I noticed that in several places.
Any other council comments? I see none. Anything from staff? Call the cards?
Uh, one card, it's Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I'm also standing up before you as a registered professional engineer, and I gave you a, a little business card, it says that I'm having trouble with the city, I mentioned a number of things that the city is, is violating some laws, numerous laws, and I mentioned them on the business card. And then, I, I think I've criticized one of your, your engineers, and that is Mr. Stauffer, and maybe I should also make some comments about this other professional engineer that you have, Mr. Cook. Well, I did, in fact, is I don't think y'all just noticed it, it says on this meltdown and so forth, six months, it says, it says, "No response from city staff," and then it said, "Except for Public Works." Well, he's Public Works. In fact, is I think he's doing a very good job.
Good job, sir.
Uh, he's, I've, I've worked with him some, and he's, he's, it just seemed like to me he's brilliant. And I, I'm, I'm very pleased that, I think we're, we're very fortunate to have him. And he's doing, he did a good job, and he surprised me on many things. He's got a mind that is amazing, so thank you, that's all.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other cards? Making sure, okay, um, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I just have to look at Kevin a while.
Kevin, we good?
Oh, yes, sir, we're good, there wasn't anything about the ordinance in that. Can I invite any of this, so?
Kevin says we can move forward.
We can move forward, okay. Mr. Mayor, council, I move that we approve ordinance number 26-2022, amending the stormwater management utility ordinance to clarify procedures.
A second.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor, I have a second from Member Nelson, roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes. Pass, that's everybody, passes unanimously, City Manager.
Onto item 9B, which is Resolution Number 142022, to vacate the right-of-way application number 1-2022 of Orange Street. An application was submitted by Kim Ruzenka, requesting the vacation of a portion of the public right-of-way on, on Orange Street, described in your packet as Exhibit A. Staff recommends the following two conditions for approval: the cross-access maintenance easements are provided for over, over all existing city-owned stormwater facilities and Spectrum and Florida City and Gas facilities in the area to be vacated. Number two, in the event that compliance with the conditions set forth here within is not achieved within 180 days of the date of approval of this vacation, the vacation shall be null and void. The Plan and Zoning Commission considered this item on their 20 July 2022 meeting, and recommended approval of right-of-way vacation 1-202022, with staff's recommendations and conditions, and requests staff to change Condition 1 to read all required easements, the rest of the conditions remain the same, and the approval by P&amp;Z was 7-0. Ms. Busaka is here to answer questions that you may have on this right-of-way vacation.
Ms. Busaka.
Wanda, could you pass out that paper? I, I don't have many more opportunities to argue with Mr. Larisse in public, so I just wanted to let you know that I found an error, and I would like to ask that the first sentence in the resolution read, "All required easements are provided as required by the city of Titusville Spectrum and Florida City Gas facilities in the area to be vacated in a form acceptable to each entity." So what that does is remove the access easement, and just say whatever easement the specific utility needs. So if you could, if you are so inclined to approve this, if you could deal with that language, that would be helpful, thank you.
Hear that, Vice Mayor? Okay. Anything else, Ms. Busaka? Okay, uh, Member Robinson? Okay, uh, Member Stokel?
Mayor, could I ask if the, if an applicant is here? Because I'd like to give you a copy.
I haven't gotten to that part yet.
No, I'm gonna give her a copy of that page.
Oh, okay, because I'm, I'm like, we gotta go through this, and then we go to applicant?
Um, my question for you, Peggy, is, with this change that you just handed us, is that what P&amp;Z was getting at with their recommendation?
Yes, ma'am, they were trying, because we may not need an access easement, we may, or a cross-access easement, we made a different kind of easement, but that is what they were trying to get to.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else on council? Anything from staff? All right, applicant, want to come forward and have your say? Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, I'm Robin Hattaway with the law firm of Lacy Lyons-Ruzenka, Rockledge Office 1290 U.S. 1. I am here on behalf of Kimberly Ruzenka. First, I'd like to thank staff for their assistance from code, code enforcement up through Ms. Busaka. I represent Melanie and Elizabeth Armstead and Mr. Scott Armstead, who is here with me this evening. They are the owners of the property directly north of the subject of tonight's resolution. They have a four-unit commercial building, which is 1213 through 1223 Garden Street, includes the, the Donuts for you shop, just for reference. The Armstead family purchased this property in 2000. Mr. Armstead thought his family owned the back area of the property, and has mowed and maintained the 25-foot strip behind the building since they purchased the property. Learning the family did not own the, the 25-inch strip, when it received a code violation letter from the city that the area needed better maintenance, he went to work with the city on it, and both the city and my client learned that he didn't actually own it, and that the city should have been maintaining it. They've been working together, um, excuse me, with the understanding that it is now a city right-of-way. The south half of the right-of-way was vacated by Resolution 43-1998 in 1998. It is unclear why the north half was not vacated at the same time. Mr. Armstead began the vacation process in 2022. They would like to fence the area and stop people using this as a cut-through to and from the walking trail, and to try to cut down on the trash and debris being left in this 25-foot strip. From the area, you can't actually access those elevated walking trails from the portion of the right-of-way, you would have to travel north to Garden Street to access the trail. There should be photos in your packet to see how it's laid out, that were put into the record at the P&amp;Z meeting. Our application meets code requirements for vacating and is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. Staff has recommended approval, as has the P&amp;Z Board on July 20th. The applicants will provide the easements to utility providers and city providers, and we request approval of the vacating application as expressed in Resolution 14-2022. And thank you, my client and I are available for questions.
Any questions from council? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just one, so you don't have a problem with the red lines that Ms. Busaka put out for the options?
No objection.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I see none, thank you. Call the cards, please?
No other cards.
Um, well, there's no reason to bring you back up to rebut the cards, sir. So at this point, Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and council, I move that we approve Resolution Number X-2022, with the additional red lines from Mrs. Busaka.
Second.
Is that correct, Ms. Busaka? We good with that?
Yes, thank you.
All right, I have a motion from Vice Mayor, I have a second from Member Nelson, roll call vote.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, thank you very much, appreciate, good seeing you guys, and City Manager.
Yes, Mayor, at this time, I'd like to read the quasi-judicial speaking procedures. During the public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi-judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table at the entrance to the chamber. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the City Council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the City Clerk. City Clerk, of all persons wishing to speak before the City Council, sign an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, sir.
Staff, and any witnesses that intend to speak, have you signed an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth? If there is anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi-judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City Clerk, of all agenda items been properly advertised.
Yes, sir.
In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, either verbal or written, outside of this hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made a part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit, or received any expert opinions regarding the quasi-judicial item, said visitor opinion shall be disclosed. If written ex parte communications exist, we'll verify that the applicant has received them and has had the opportunity to review and is ready to proceed. Any disclosures? Has anyone received any written correspondence to make part of the record?
Counsel? I have not on this, this one.
No, any of the items that are, this, and again, this will be for your rezoning 12022 in Jennifer Drive, and then we'll, you also need to have to do the same disclosures for the small-scale comprehensive plan amendment rezoning on item E.
Yeah, I'm Brennan, I think I had one on another issue.
All right, so when that item comes up, if you have something, we could handle it then.
Okay, onto 9D, which is the rezone application number 1-2022 for Jennifer Drive. The applicant and owner Lawrence Graham is requesting to rezone three parcels located on the east side of Jennifer Drive from multifamily medium-density residential R2 zoning district to single-family medium-density R1B zoning district. The parcel totals .95 acres. On July 6, 2022, the Plan and Zoning Commission considered this item and unanimously voted 7-0 to recommend approval. Ms. Busaka is here to answer questions that you may have on this item.
And I would like to read the title.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 272022, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number 5193, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by replacing the present multifamily medium-density residential R2 to the single-family medium-density residential R1B zoning district for parcels located on east side of Jennifer Drive, approximately .95 acres in size, having parcel ID numbers 21353300583, and 21353300584, and 21353300585, and providing for an effective date.
Anything from staff?
Yes, sir, I would just like to tell you that in 2021, the applicant requested and was denied permits to construct single-family homes on these parcels. The applicant had assumed the parcels were part of the adjacent Vernon Heights subdivision, which was approved in 1979 as a patio home development. As we discussed last week, patio homes are defined as detached, single-family homes with one side having a zero setback. Until the year 2006, patio homes were permitted in the R2 zoning district. So what the request is, is to allow single-family homes to be constructed in this area, which appears to be part of a subdivision, but is not. The zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan, it is, their public facilities are available, and there are no concurrency-related issues. The existing zoning is consistent with the surrounding properties, and the area is developed as single-family patio homes, which is essentially the request of the applicant. The staff is recommending approval of this rezoning.
Thank you very much, council, anything? Applicant?
Jessica, you have any question?
Come on up, so we can, can do that, I don't know that we're gonna do anything, substitute back down. Come on up so we can, can do that. I don't know that we're going to do anything, substitute back down, but. Counsel, do you have any questions? But we do, I do want everyone TV to see you're really here. There really is an applicant. All right, buddy. Thank you so much. Any cards?
We only had one card, which I believe is the applicant Lawrence Graham. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So you don't need to rebut the cards either, because it would have been you. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, council, I move that we approve rezoning application number 1-2022, Jennifer Drive.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, a second from Member Nelson. Roll call, vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to clarify that.
One thing you're going to clarify.
I just want to clarify that the approval of the rezoning was based on consistency with the comprehensive plan in finding that it met the criteria of the rezoning pursuant to staff's recommendation.
Absolutely. Staff's recommendation, comprehensive plan, everything was perfect. Thank you. All right, city man?
On to Item 9E, which is small-scale comprehensive plan amendment application in rezon number 22-2022, the cottages. City attorney will read the two ordinances for the record.
Ordinance number 152022, an ordinance, amending ordinance number 5193 of the City of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by changing the zoning classification of approximately 15 acres of land located at the southwest corner of the Highway U.S. 1 and Dairy Road intersection with parcel ID number 21352800279 from the community commercial CC zoning classification to the planned development zoning classification, providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 162022, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60-1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville, by amending the future land use designation of approximately 9.7 acres of land located at the southwest corner of Highway U.S. 1 in the Dairy Road intersection with parcel ID number 21352800279 from the commercial high-intensity future land use designation to residential medium-density future land use designation, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Rodney Honeycutt, representing Carl Goeth and Beverly Goeth Trustees, is requesting a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment and rezon to allow residential use on a 9.7-acre portion of a 15-acre partial located on southeast, southwest corner of U.S. 1 and Dairy Road intersection. The remaining 5.3 acres will remain in commercial high-intensity future land use designation, but will be included in the planned development zoning district under a unified master plan. The item was originally tabled by city council to a public hearing today. The applicant now has resubmitted a master plan. According to the applicant, the main difference in the revised plans is the addition, additional buffering on the west and south sides of the site in response to comments made from the community. The playground tot lot is also spelled out on the plan. The enhanced buffering opaque fence along the industrial area remains intact. Attached to the copy of the PowerPoint presentation I believe the applicant will be giving? Or is it you, Peggy? The applicant. Planning and zoning recommended approval of this action 5-2. With the two no votes were due to concerns with safety of children on the sidewalks, crossing four lanes of traffic, lack of homeowners association, more traffic on Dairy Road, environmental concerns regarding the debris on the site, and the density and limited ADA access. And the planning and zoning also recommended several other items that are in your packet for your consideration.
Mayor, at this time, could I clarify the ordinance numbers? I, I see the agenda has ordinance 15 as the comprehensive land, the land use change, and ordinance 16 as the zoning, whereas the agenda ordinances I was provided had the numbers different. So I want to make sure that which ordinance, is it ordinance 15 goes with the land use or the zoning and ordinance 16? I want to make sure that, is the agenda correct?
Yeah, you're right.
Agenda is right.
Okay, so ordinance 15 will be the land use change, ordinance 16 is the zoning. So when I read them, if I had those numbers mixed, that's, because I believe they were marked differently, but.
Okay.
Just wanted to clarify that the agenda was correct.
Should we do our disclosure if we've had any emails or anything like that?
Yes.
Okay, I, I think we were all copied on this one from Mary Spar. I think that's the only one that I got. Yeah, regarding tree canopy issues, wetlands. And the contents of the email has not impacted my decision one way or another.
Yep, that was the one.
Any other counsel?
And that copy of that email has been provided to the applicant.
Yeah, we all got it.
We got the same one.
All council members received that?
Yep.
Any opinions form that you need to disclose based on receipt? You know, make sure a copy is provided to the clerk.
And I also spoke to Steve Bridges about the potential traffic problems and Joe Richardson about the ADA issues that I think he brought up in planning and zoning. So those did not, I did not form an opinion from those conversations.
And let me add for that, I'm glad you did. Probably 20 minutes before I got here, I got a voicemail from Mr. Richardson, same concerns. Remember, planning and zoning, and gave me those same concerns. One was ADA and thinks about kids.
I believe the person on planning and zoning that voted no was Jane Spideau, and she was concerned about kids being on the sidewalk and that much traffic being in the area.
Again, I'll just make it clear, I got a voicemail from Mr. Richardson, and I can share that as needed, but I'm, no change, I'm here. All right. Staff?
First of all, I have a copy of the changes that were proposed by the planning and zoning board as part of the development agreement. If that is useful, I'm not development agreement, the planned development ordinance, if that is useful to you to see this strike through and underline, Wanda can pass it out. But I know that this is hard to read sometimes when it's put in a big block at the first page. So those changes have been provided also to the applicant. Currently, the property is zoned for a community commercial, and it is being proposed to be made into the nine acres into residential. The 5.3-acre portion of the parcel will stay in commercial high intensity and will be included in the planned development zoning district. The properties immediately to the west and south of the subject property are residential and in the unincorporated county. The county's residential, for comprehensive plan, future land use designation allows up to four units an acre. The adjacent family lots in the area range from two-tenths of an acre in size and one acre, and a few are three acres. There are 27 single-family parcels located within 500 feet of the subject property. The average size of those parcels is one acre. In general, the proposed residential use is compatible with the adjacent commercial use and existing residential uses and does serve as a transition between the single-family and the commercial. The proposed medium-density residential land use would cap any new residential developments to 97 units. If this is, this should be compared with the potential for commercial, which is currently on the property. Some of the distances, the front setbacks, rear setback, and side setback of the commercial community, of the community commercial and the PD master plan are identical. However, there is a difference in height. Community commercial does not have a height limitation. The height limitation on the PD will be 35 feet. In addition to that, there is no open space commercial, required for the commercial property, and there is a minimum of 35% open space required with a proposal from this development of 40%. So in the event that there is no change and it remains as it is, there is a potential for development that could be more intense based on height, lack of open space than the proposed residential uses. The, in addition to that, there will be a traffic study necessary to analyze the impacts to Dairy Road and the surrounding road network, including the traffic light at the Dairy Road U.S. 1 intersection. It is estimated that the development will generate 643 average daily trips. The application appears to help meet a housing need in the city. And however, as you know, in these areas where there are mixes of uses, in this case, there are large lot, single-family. There's a, some smaller lot, single-family, which is not the predominant use in the area. There's also industrial. And so when you see mix of uses like that in an area, it is often difficult to determine that any one land use will not have a conflict with another. So in the case of this, if you were to keep commercial as it is, you may find that the intensity of a community commercial with, I'm going to pick on a grocery store that has the backup trucks beeping may be something that you want to consider versus the fact that, in this case, there would be a portion of the residential close to an area zoned industrial. So in many cases, especially in the infill that we're seeing within the city these days, it is very challenging not to find a parcel that doesn't have some kind of potential conflict. In this case, what the developer has chosen to do is to propose a additional buffering above what is required, and in the case of the industrial, a 50-foot building setback from the industrial line. Those are all shown on the proposed development plan that you have been provided. There has been relatively small amount of commercial development since 2010 in this vicinity, which could be indicative of an excess of commercial real estate. In addition to that, I can provide you with policies that the city has about the established need for workforce housing in the city of Titusville. In the case, the Titusville Economic Development Feasibility Study identifies there is a need for workforce housing. And the households in Titusville, Florida have a median annual income of $48,757. That was based on the US Census Bureau 2016 to 2020. That is less than the median annual income of $65,712 across the United States. So we have been advised that while this is not an affordable housing project that would have requirements for the amount of money that a community, a family can make in order to qualify, because of the nature of these being duplexes, it's anticipated, and I believe it is the intent of the developer, to make these workforce housing for teachers, firemen, that kind of thing. The staff does recommend that this GOF be approved. And the first decision is the land use decision, which is a change from residential medium-density. I'm sorry, which is a change, yes, a change from residential medium land use. I'm going to get this right. The staff recommends a residential medium land use density change, which allows a maximum of 10 dwelling units an acre. The second request is to change the zoning, and the zoning would be to planned development. And the standards that are shown in that ordinance are specific to this development. I'll just make one other comment about the difference between commercial and the planned development. And that is for our city's noise standards. Residential has a noise standard of 55 decibels. In the case of commercial, the standard is 60 decibels. And in the case of industrial, it's act, up against residential, it's 59. So the difference in the noise, and I am not a noise engineer, but there is a one difference actually less for industrial against a residential development than the city standard is for commercial against a residential development. Now, I'm not, I know that noise is logarithmic, so one decibel doesn't necessarily mean a little bit. But there is, I thought you'd be interested to know that there, the noise difference is actually lower in industrial against residential. If you have any questions, I'll do my best.
Any questions for Ms. Busaka, Member Nelson?
I do have a question. Peggy, do we know how much workforce housing we need? How much we have and how much we need?
I do not have those specific numbers as to the number, but.
An estimate? A good guess.
I don't have that in front of me. I can tell you that affordability is increasingly an issue, that we're seeing it in rentals. We're seeing it as, we've seen a lot of money coming to the state of Florida, as you know, after COVID, which raised the prices. I think that the property values going up 15%, isn't that the number, sir? That, I think, will tell you that there has clearly been an increase in the amount of money it takes to house a family. But I don't have those specific numbers.
Other than, well, let me ask you, what other potential pieces of property do we have that we could use for workforce housing?
Well, essentially, workforce housing is based upon the cost to develop. So the more dense the property is, the fewer environmental issues there are on the property, the less impacts that there, that have to be mitigated, such as turn lanes or other off-site impacts, the more likely that there's the potential for it to become workforce housing. So if, the more expensive it is to develop, the larger lots, the more wetlands, if it's on a riverfront, those are going to be more expensive and less likely to be workforce housing.
Last question. Would it be, putting everything aside, would it be more compatible to have this going to low-density residential? Given you've got that, those other areas where you have acre lots, two-acre lots? I don't know if there is an answer for that, but I might ask anyway.
Okay, I think, as I've said in previous projects, that having a residential and commercial, and having large lot residential and then commercial, that multifamily is an acceptable transition. But based on the character of the area, you may feel that single-family would, or a lower density would be better. In this case, the project does have not only commercial on the frontage, but industrial to the side. So putting a smaller lot, single-family in there may actually be less likely. And in that case, and I don't have a crystal ball, but in that case, it may just stay as commercial and be developed that way because there comes a time when multifamily seems to fit better in those more intense uses.
And I guess I'm asking because that, that area has always seemed to be sort of rural. And we're sort of putting like a high-intensity area in the middle of it.
Well, what I think, I think, I think commercial is more high-intensity than multifamily. And right now, that's what you're looking at, is if you don't make a change, then it would be commercial. But it's been commercial there a long time. The neighbors may feel very comfortable with it being developed as commercial. Okay, thank you.
Member Robinson?
Yes, I'm, I'm always intrigued by words that we use. You know, I'm always looking them up. And we, we call this workforce housing. And, and, and I heard that the developer says that this was a low-income housing. And I know a lot about that, a little bit, anyway. Section 8 is, and all low-income housing is now built on zip codes. It's not built on just the general area anymore. If, if the zip code, if, if a certain area demands a certain amount. If, if the zip code, if a certain area demands a certain amount, you can get that amount for section eight, because section eight will, sitting on the housing board, I'm very much aware that I know that. Now, my question would be, and because this is kind of for the residents, so to, that are there, to make sure that they are aware of things that may be coming down the road. I think we need more housing, I understand. But I, I think everything needs to be on the table when we build housing that, that may change our community a little bit. So is to the, this may be a question for the developer. I see him as such a nice gentleman, I love the way he speaks. And is, is section, I know section eight can be adjusted to fit what we may be terming workforce housing, because it is based on zip coding, what the housing costs in that particular area. And you can be adjusted as so. So in, in knowing that, we are going to have families that meet the low-income status in this workforce housing. Is that a possibility? Is that going to happen? Will that happen? Is it, is it feasible that that will happen? Is my question. Because we are using workforce housing and staying away from the fact of, of low-income housing, because the residents are the ones that are concerned of who's moving into my neighborhood. And I'm not saying that low-income people are bad people. I'm not saying that, by no means. And anybody who knows me knows that I would not say that. But I'm also concerned, because there's so many units being put into this 97, as I understand. And, and I know what that can lead to after a couple of years of, of all of that being, all of those housing units being put in one spot. And I know that we need housing. I know that, and, but I also know that housing must be managed. And if it's not managed well, I know what the end results after a couple of years will be. And I want the residents to be aware of that. So I'm, I just want everything, I'm so, my concern, I sit here and I see so many things that are done, and I don't believe that, that they are done in open and unfairly. And so, and I want to make sure that the resident, or, or, that the current, the present resident are aware of all of the possibilities down the road that they may be facing, because I love country living. I love having a lot of acreage. I don't like being close together, but I know that in today's lifestyle, people don't want a moat of yards, so they don't want much yard. And I know that is addressed. But I know that this workforce housing and, and low-income housing is, is hard to differentiate in many, many cases. And, and I want to make sure that in, that the management of this property is aware of that. And the people who are presently in the community are aware of that as well, and they don't get any surprises down the road. And all of a sudden, they are facing the problem of inner-city blues. I guess that's where I'm going. Facing the problem of any, any inner-city blues. And that would be horrible to the people who have invested in their homes and in their houses and in their land presently off of Dairy Road. That's my thoughts.
And I certainly hear what you're saying, and I can appreciate what you're saying. I'm not sure that some of what you said you meant to say, because I, I think that we go out of our way to make sure that every possible way that people can be informed, they're informed. We stay here till 5:00 in the morning if we have to, to make sure that everybody has their say. So I'm not, no, I'm not talking, well, there were people here. So what I'm saying is, when, when they're here, we're hearing them, and they're hearing us. So I'm going to at least make sure I get it said out there that I don't think a lot of things go on here that people don't know about. I think that what we're trying to do, and that's why we have the process we have now, that's why they're going to come present, that's why people have cards, and every chair that's empty could be filled if they want it to be. So what I'm getting at, I think maybe I misunderstood, but there was a little line in there that you're concerned that sometimes we do things and people don't know what we're doing. And I want to make sure that if that's the case, it's not because we're not trying.
Okay.
I agree. All right, there we go. All right, with that, I see no more counsel. Staff, anything you want to add? Let's call the applicant, so we can clarify everything. Member Robinson?
Yeah, you know about, you know about Mike. Good evening. My name is Bob Koch. We met very briefly just about a week ago, and I've come back to do the presentation I thought I was going to do at that time, so hopefully with the bearing. I'm still a little bit wet from making it in, in that thunderstorm that came down, so I left my coat back there, because it's strip drying. And thanks for the question, Mr. Robinson, about the issues on housing. And so that you have a little backstory, I am a member of ULI, Urban Land Institution. It's a nationwide organization of planners and public officials and developers that are focused on the planning issues that are critical to our communities today. And for four years, I taught affordable housing development for DCA, Department of Community Affairs for the state of Florida. I'm an advocate in that particular arena. Our firm does about 3,000 units a year throughout the state of Florida for the affordable arena. So I, I would offer that as just a backstory. I think if you have questions about it, I'll be more than glad to educate. And I do provide counseling services to cities that are looking on what they can do to help solve and resolve this huge problem. 15% inflation, by the way, was 15% per year over the last three years. So if you haven't monitored the cost of housing today, it's almost about 40% higher than it was in 2019. And in fact, the median income, if you look at the cost of housing, median income and median home sales value, normally, over the course of history, your history, my history, it's normally about four and a half times the median income is the median price of the house. So if you have a $50,000 income, four and a half times that means you can afford a $200,000, $225,000 house. Today, in Florida, it's seven and a half to eight times the income. So that shows you the disparity between the cost of housing. In the two and a half years we've been seeking this request, we've seen almost 35% inflation in the product we're proposing. So having said those things, it's just backstory, I'm happy to share this information, win or lose, because I think I'm, as an advocate of the issue, I want you to know that this is a very critical thing. This is also an avocational interest on my part. It doesn't pay the bills. I believe in the cause, and so I do it by trying to solve the problem. Okay. Do we have the slide presentation? There we go. I don't need to tell you the site. You know the site. I'm sure you've been by the site. It's a very attractive parcel of land. It's located with frontage on the highway, but not really on the highway, because the trail system separates us from the highway. And so it has high visibility to the highway, but no access from the highway. The access is limited to Dairy Road, and the access on Dairy Road was constructed when Dairy Road was realigned and improved a few years back. And a curb cut was provided to the site on Dairy Road, and that is the location that we have entrance. By the way, that curb cut communally serves the lumberyard, Brevard Lumberyard, which is the zoned industrial portion of land that's in our neighborhood. The only industrial zone land in this neighborhood, by the way. And historically, if you wanted to know the land itself, the parcel in question was zoned industrial too, going back over time, because Lumberyard had at one point in time a concrete manufacturing facility there. And so it was a completely cleared site. All the trees you see are volunteers that came to it over natural course of time, and they manufactured concrete products in the years passed. So this is a site that was once in all industrial. Portions of it was zoned commercial, and now we're looking to zone down part of that commercial to a multifamily residential low-intensity, 10 units to the acre, not high-intensity residential use. It's on a signal intersection. It has relatively good access from the highway, and of course, it has excellent access to the workforce that we would like to serve, the schools, the college, the other schools, the hospital, and of course, the city center. It's only three miles from downtown. So it's, and it's on the trail, which gives you all forms of communication options in terms of not just walking, but bicycling, other ways to get to and from all the things of interest to you. Excuse me, there we go. The parcel land is substantial. You can see in the, what would be the southeast corner, the outline of the Brevard Lumber Company Yard, that's been there for quite a long time. By the way, the history of that right, that easement that came through the site was that at one point in time, there was a concern that Lumberyard might not have access to the highway. If you've been there and you've seen the Lumberyard, you would know it's almost entirely an open edge along the highway. And so you can drive in and out. But they also have a median cut. And so they were fearful that that median cut might be taken away. And so as a result, they sought the easement from across the land to get to Dairy Road so they could have access to the light, should that ever happen. I want to put, also at this point in time, to let you know that it is not our intent to ask for any crossings to the rail, the trail program. We're entirely depending on the Dairy Road access points, as are legal and currently applied access points. So that was a question that came up at the zoning meeting, was not mentioned, but I wanted to assure you that, as we did then, that we would not be asking for that. The planning staff has also told you about the comparison, but being the commercial and the residential uses. What you failed to mention to you, however, is that we've committed to a 35-foot residential buffer on the single-family residential edge, and there's three homes that border us on the western edge. The retail buffer is 15-foot. Okay? To give you an idea, not only does it have pretty much a 65-foot height limitation, it has a buffer that has little consequence. So I want you to know that the 35-foot buffer that we propose across the single-family side, and we have a 25-foot buffer on this, it would be the southern side, but there's an old right-of-way there that's a partial right-of-way. We're dedicating 10-foot and having the buffer to the right-of-way, so the right-of-way will be perfected. There are no single-family homes that are above us on the south. There's a right-of-way on the south, but it's a substandard right-of-way. So to make that right-of-way and perfect the access for the homes that are off that street, we are giving another 10-foot to that right-of-way to ensure, so it has a completeness. We actually own to the centerline of the street, if you will. So we're trying to make it right. I'd like to just tell you a little bit about rental housing, if I may. And I apologize if I sound professorial, but that has to do with my other avocational interests. One-third of every household in the United States is a tenant. One-third. And chances are, every one of you were a tenant at some point in your life. And the evolution of yours is coming up as a young person, or in the case of a person of my age, a person who doesn't want, wants to lock and leave and setting rental ownership or rental occupancy sounds awfully good. And so you see in our society today, from 2008 to 2013, the average age of the first home buyer went from 27 to 34. That's seven years. That more than increased the housing population demand by 50% in this country. It's pretty close to the European model, which, by the way, is 37 for the first home buyer. And so what you see is people not really running toward homeownership for a lot of reasons, one of which, of course, we just talked about inflation. But there are other reasons, too. Overhanging college debt make them less able to qualify. Career advancement sometimes requires mobility. And if you buy a home, you might not be able to get the best job, especially in a community that has an aerospace basis. You follow me? And so you have people here who are well-employed, well-educated, but they're transients because they're not committed to this, the long-term job opportunity market. You also have the seniors, the move-downs, the baby boomers, which I precede, unfortunately, who are moving into rental environments, because they're trying to release themselves of cleaning filters, mowing lawns, taking care of pools, all the kinds of things that homeownership implies. And so we see these two polar ends of our market, the young, young fam, the young pre-family, by the way. Marriage is also pushed back in the educated class quite a bit, and childbearing years is being pushed back in the educated class as well. So that's something else to be mindful of. So I mention those things because it's a very interesting dynamic. There's an awful lot, I'd say a significant percentage of the renters in the world today, in our country today, are renters by choice, not renters by necessity. And that comes back to the workforce issue. The workforce issue is defined federally as those whose income is between 80% and 120% of median income. So roughly, if the median income is 50, then you'd be in an income household range of between $40,000 and $60,000 a year. On the affordable side, whether it be section eight or the low-income housing tax credit program done by the federal program, which is a very successful program and sponsored by Florida Housing Authority, it's a subsidized program. It has to be. There is no way you can build housing for that class without subsidy. And there's certainly no need to subsidize the more wealthy portion of our societies. But believe it or not, there's absolutely no incentive for workforce housing. And yet the workforce housing consumer, as has been pointed out by staff, are your teachers, are your nurses, are your firemen, are the service people that take care of you, the person that does your hair, the person who, you know, cleans your car. These are hard-working members of our society that bring a lot to our community, and yet they're the ones that are being most disenfranchised, that are called the missing middle, if you follow the news in the industry. So I tell you those things because I want you to be able to appreciate that this is a very respectful class. And I know there were some fears about perhaps this would lower the value of the neighborhood. And I wanted you to understand that these people are valued, just like you were probably a person of value at the time in your life, when you were a tenant. Our product is unique. It has no precedent, to the best of my knowledge. I'd not be able to see it. If you look at the schematic on the drawing, you would see that the units are built with two units as a duplex, in which the rear wall mates, not the side wall, but the rear wall. So the fronts of the units are on opposing sides of each box. Each front faces a garden courtyard, and it's a communal neighborhood. So you see only one face of the duplex in one courtyard, and in the neighboring courtyard, you see the other face. And so if you can read that schematic up there, it gives you a picture. So it really looks and feels like a single-family dwelling. Let me insert in this point in time that all dwellings are not equal. When we use the terms like density, we're counting houses, homes. But a one-bedroom house, no, that doesn't exist. And you won't find any new developers building new two-bedroom houses. Those are the domain of the rental marketplace. Those are the homebuyer incubators. They have to come through that process to get to the point where they can be a homebuyer. And so if I'm putting two one-bedrooms or a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom together in a building and calling it a duplex, it's the size of a single-family house. It's a three-bedroom complex. Each duplex has no more tendency than the average single-family home in your community. And the statistics are there for you to research if you want to, but I'm telling you, the number of persons per household are lower, the number of cars per household are lower, the number of trips per day are lower, because the dwelling is smaller and the occupancy is less. It's really simple. So be careful, because if you had student housing, you could have a four-bedroom house with four cars, right? If you had a senior living retirement house, you could have a three-bedroom house with one car. They're not equal. And this is the kind of community that would want to have all forms of housing available to its constituent. And this is the one that you truly need. By the way, we did a market study. Now, it's old, almost three years old now, but there was a demand within a five-mile radius of 1,500 units that could fit into this price bracket. 1,500 within a five-mile radius. We'd have to refresh that, but I'm just telling you to answer the question. What's the need? It's really an insatiable need. There is no other opportunity to do this. I'm sorry for this long-winded and professorial kind of quality. I apologize, that's just the nature of the old animal. It's kind of hard to change. Okay? The units are very simple. They're one, two, and three-bedroom units. The two-bedroom units, by the way, are considered split, double-master. So they're mingle's units. They're attractive for two guys, two gals that want to co-inhabit, so they can lower their housing costs. So essential with people who are nurses and other kinds of service employers. Unique to this, however, coming back to the previous page, if I may, is the area between the buildings provides for a side yard like a zero-lot-line home, so that every unit has a private outdoor yard. You don't find that in apartments. You don't find that in apartments. Every unit is one-story. You don't find that in apartments. And so it's a very low-density, low-profile development. If you looked at the house built as the equal in size of a home at 10 to the acre, that's equivalent in mass to 5 to an acre with a full-size three-bedroom house as a density basis. So the physical intensity of the product is not as ominous as it may sound when you just listen to numbers and you don't think about these other elements in the plan. Thank you for being kind enough to make me go through this, because I'm very passionate, as you can see. The units are lifestyle-appropriate. They have island kitchens, they have indoor-outdoor relationships. You can see in the window on the sop right, that somebody's looking out to the side yard, which is that little private fenced area that gives every family its own outdoor living. There's a view of one of the cluster courtyards. By the way, this is a planning tradition that goes back to the 20s, the bungalow courts of the 20s, if you know anything about land planning, where homes, that's before they had cars for every house, so you could make it a walking environment. So no unit faces a parking in the street. Every unit faces that little garden courtyard. And that garden courtyard is a little communal pedestrian cul-de-sac that really encourages neighborly relationships between the various residents. By the way, 25% of our residents will be over 55 at the least, at the least. And the statistics I can bear out, because we have comparable projects to showcase for you. You'd be also surprised that, I'd say, at least half the residents are... You'd be also surprised that, I'd say, at least half the residents are residents that are already here in the community, the younger folks that are graduating from college that want to come back to town but can't afford to find a place, and the older folks who are already here for 40 and 50 years that want to move down and kind of simplify life. So there's a front, a view of one of the three of the faces facing the courtyard. They're bungalow-style architecture, traditional Florida architecture. It's an architectural palette that comes from our tradition. Every unit is colored different. Every unit is a little bit different, so it's very eclectic, not like an apartment where everything is the same. It has a village personality. That's one of those little private patios that belongs to each unit on the side yard. So if you do have a child, you have a place for a swing set, you have a place for a grill, you can't find that in an apartment project. You know, so this is very, very atypical to what you would normally see when you think of apartments or rental housing. There's a color concept I'm playing there that's, I could showcase you and walk with you, but if you will, in the upper right-hand corner, you'll see the light commercial, and this is village-scale retail. This is not big-box retail. We're proposing boxes that are about 6,000 square foot each. Those 6,000 square foot eaches would be the equivalent, maybe, of two or three small stores, like a nail salon or a laundry pickup or something of that nature. These are the neighborhood conveniences that the neighborhood could actually use quite a bit, but there's not enough rooftops there to do it. This helps to build a rooftop base that justifies the merchant's ability to put in a facility to service the entire community, not just this campus. We're using retention to separate those two uses, and of course, the buffers that I mentioned are all the way along the south and all the way along the west in the manner that I've already described. By the way, the 35-foot buffer, just so you know, have a sense of visualization, is the distance from this counter to the back wall. That's an undisturbed buffer, and if you see in that site, it's a wooded site. That's, that will remain constant on the residential edges. And that 35-foot buffer is not the building setback. The building is another 10-foot from that. The height of the building, the drip line, is with a trim mark, is up there on the roof, and the top of the gable is less than the height of the ceiling. So just for a proportional standpoint, I want you to understand that being very respectful and very protective of the interest of our neighbors and ourselves as well. We did have a playground. It was not called for. We went back and showed it. We do have a playground. We do have a pool. We do have a gathering area. We do have a fitness area. We have the kinds of amenities that these people want in their community but can't afford to put in their own apartments. And some images, that's a clubhouse picture of the clubhouse that's proposed, by the This is a transitional zoning. Out of great respect, I want to respond to some of the comments that you were, you're told that had raised by those commissioners who expressed a negative vote, and maybe some from the audience. The density-intensity I've already talked to you about, yes, we're a higher density in terms of units, but in terms of intensity, we're really not that much higher than the single-family development for the reasons I've already stated. The fact that it is a non-compatible or conforming use to have multifamily next to single-family, but it's far more compatible than commercial next to single-family, or because we have multifamily next to industrial. But we're putting a buffer in between us and the industrial, and if the industrial renovates, they'll have to put a buffer on their side as well. So our buffer and their buffer will be a massive buffer between us. So we're very comfortable with that outcome if industrial should grow on the campus that has already zoned industrial, and we'd be the ones that are most affected. Accessibility. The site is mandated by federal law because it's a multifamily site to be entirely ADA compliant. The site is ADA compliant. There are no federal laws governing dwellings when they're one-family dwellings and two-family dwellings. That's why your home has no accessibility provisions in it unless you decide to pay for it. However, we have completely adopted the Federal Fair Housing Act as the design standards for this community. Every unit is, meets the physical dimensional requirements for an accessible unit as defined by the federal government. So you should know that. And we've said this before, and I want to state again, but somehow or another, it just didn't catch with those who are judging us. Our site is ADA compliant because it has to be. Units are not ADA-eligible. Units are subject to the Federal Fair Housing Act and the Florida State Accessibility Code. We're compliant voluntarily, voluntarily compliant. There is no HOA because there is no owners, and HOA is a homeowners association. Kind of a self-pleasing when you have a lot of independent owners who are trying to make a consensus, sort of like a planning board, you know? At the end of the day, the owner makes a decision. This is a $20 million investment, minimum. This is a big investment for me. It's a legacy investment for me. That's a lot, that's not, that's not something to, for me to treat lightly. I'm going to steward that thing very appropriately because it really is the legacy of my family at the end of the day, which I hope it will be a successful legacy, if you agree. And so there is no need for having an HOA because there are no individual owners. We want the residents to be stakeholders. And by the way, there's a lot of ways a good rental managed community can create senses of residential equity, particularly social equity within the community. It's one of the more valuable tools you try to create. Did you know that if you sold your house, the only thing they qualify the buyer for is the financial character of that person? They don't check their criminal character. There's no requirement for a criminal check on the sale of a home. There's no requirement for a criminal check on the leasing of a home. The only housing environment that requires a criminal check on the tenant is the rental housing market, something to be mindful of, just as a matter of character. There were some concerns about the environmental issues because of the debris in the site. It was construction debris, and the material that they were making, the broke parts. This would be akin to redeveloping a site where there was a parking lot and maybe a building foundation where you had concrete and asphalt. Yeah, we don't think it's environmental. We did a Phase 1 environmental. They showed no indication it was a problem. Well, you'll have to do it again because it's two and a half years old, but at the end of the day, we have no fears as an environmental issue, but if there were, we have an obligation, a state obligation, to rectify the matter. So that's curing that problem. By the way, a lot of the debris that's there has grown up around those trees and around that debris. So as we take the debris, unfortunately, we'll have to harvest some of those trees that are embedded in that material. This is a transitional zoning. You have industrial, next to it you have commercial, next to it have your low-density multifamily, and last to it you have rural residential. That's the normal planning discipline. It's not an odd one. It's not an irreverent one. And we believe this is consistent with the vision of the city and its own long-line planning policy because it is a transitional zoning used in a transitional way, and I thank you for your attention. I'm sorry I was so narrative.
Member Nelson.
One question. If we were to approve it, would you be agreeable to a 20% tree canopy? Because it sounds like you've got your buffer.
We will probably meet that with a buffer alone.
I, I think you probably will.
If you, if you think about the perimeter of a circle, you know, when you raise a circle out by, by 5%, the amount that you add is not 5%, it's like 35%. I would be surprised if we wouldn't meet that requirement, hands down.
So, and I'm asking because you have to have 35% open space, right?
Yeah, right.
So between the buffer and the open space, I'm assuming you would be able to meet it.
That's correct. And by the way, our open space is not accounting the private yards, just for the record. I mean, it's actually much larger if you consider that open space, which it is. It's permio, open, green, landscaped, and vegetated spaces.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think your plan alone will put you in the 20%. Go ahead.
Yeah, great presentation, by the way. You speak well. I'm very impressed with you.
I've had a number of years of practice. I turned 80 in September, so make a good birthday present for me tonight.
Couple, couple of questions. You know, you were talking about the cost of housing and what people can afford.
Right.
So of course, I got my ear, and I know my, my daughter is an engineer over in St. Petersburg, and I know what she pays for a one-bedroom apartment. So my question to you is, what are you going to be charging for a one-bedroom?
Again, cost and everything else are in the factor. The generic approach I can give you the answer to today is the rental housing underwriting for a tenant is the same as it is the purchase underwriting for a buyer. It's roughly 33% of the take-home pay, okay, is the rent. The big difference is, in rental housing, that rent includes things that are not in the purchase price. When you pay PI-TI on a mortgage, property, you know, insurance, principal, interest, taxes, and insurance, you're not including lawn care, filter changes, pest control, pool cleaning, replacement of reserve. All those things are built into rent. So if you think about it, the rental value is actually pretty good, and furthermore, you can't buy a one-bedroom house unless you has wheels on it, you know? You can't buy a two-bedroom house that's new.
All right, you, you're smooth with that, but let me, let me make it clear, okay?
So, so the answer, if, if the median income was $50,000, right?
Okay.
And the, the one-third rule would mean that would be one-third over a year would go to rent, so one-third of 50, right? And then that would be divided over 12 months. So there's the simple math that gets you to the, the goal. That's our target goal. That is our target goal.
It's going to be base or the application?
No, it's not rent-based. It's going to ultimately cost-based, but our target is to meet that community, the people who are within that 80 to 120% of median income bracket. So for you, that means a $40,000 to $60,000 household income. That's what median income is.
I need it clearer than that. So is it going to be $1,800 a month or $2,000 a month?
Our goal for the one-bedroom is under $1,000, so that I can answer that question very specifically. Our goal for the two-bedroom is about $1,350 to $1,400.
Okay.
And our three-bedroom would be about $1,700.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's, knowing what my daughter pays, that's very reasonable for that size.
And I'll tell you why, because we're building duplexes.
Okay.
They're simple buildings. They go up fast, right? We're, we're using what makes your house cheap. You may not realize it, but as you make density higher, the cost of construction goes up. The difference between one-story and two-story is almost five bucks a square foot in the multifamily industry. The difference between two-story and three-story is almost $10 a square foot, and it's all in invisible things, you know, that you don't see. Different rating on drywalls, fire protection systems, certain kinds of electrical devices and alarm systems, but you don't need them in a one- and two-family dwelling. So we're taking advantage of the smartness of low-density, low-intensity building to build dwellings on a smaller size to meet people with smaller incomes.
He's a good marketer.
Very good, and no doubt. Well, I think part of it is you're passionate about what you do. You can see that, and when you finally came down with the real numbers, and Vice Mayor talked about how that compared to Tampa, that's pretty good. I can tell you, compared to Titusville, that's pretty good right now. So with that said, let's move to the cards, and we'll, good to have you come to the end. I see no more questions from council, so call the cards, please.
Rodney Honeycutt, but I believe he's part of the applicant.
He is part of the applicant.
Rodney Honeycutt, 3700 South Washington Avenue. I'll just follow up with some of the things that I didn't hear instead of going over some of those things. Number one is, you see, this application's been around since 2020, and one of the reasons is we originally started off with multifamily. There was concern, there was no lockdown on the number of units, and so we reset, went for a PD, and had another community meeting because we changed that, and submitted again, and, and a staff meeting, there were concerns about needing more buffer between the, the industrial and this, and this site, and so we, we sat back and we provided that, and then we had our, our hearing, and there was, there was people on the P&amp;Z board that said, well, you've got more buffer on the industrial side than you do on the residential. We'd rather have it switched. So we went back, that was the last time we tabled it, and we came back, and now we have the same buffer on the residential, which is not twice as much but close, 20, we got 35 feet of landscape buffer instead of 20 feet required. So I just wanted to let you know, we're trying hard to work to make, to make this work. Some other things, there are public utilities on-site, water and sewer. The lift station will be private, though. The 643 trips per day is actually pretty low traffic. I know if, if you happen to go by, say, Knox-McRae on Solomar Grand, that's 210 units, and you hardly ever see a vehicle come out. I mean, there's, it's just, I mean, it sounds like a high number, but it's not really. I know there was some concern by one of the P&amp;Z members about access to some of the units for ADA. I understand the concern. I understand he's got a firsthand knowledge, but if you compare this to most other apartments that are three-story and have no elevators, I think this is more accessible because all the sidewalks that are to the units that are further away are ADA-accessible. So you could get on a wheelchair and go to those units. You can't do that in a three-story apartment that has no elevators, and apartments aren't required to have elevators at three stories, and I don't think there's any in town that Also, somebody's concerned about kids being in the street, and, and this is not a real dense, 97 units, most apartments are 200-plus. I, I think it's the opposite, multifamily units like this has to be at least on a collector art area. I think that's correct.
PD, a planned development?
A planned development like this does, and so I think you're going to always have traffic and kids. We're kind of fortunate here. If kids did decide they wanted to walk to school or the park, there's a sidewalk the entire way. A lot of places in town don't have sidewalks to all those, all those facilities. So I think that's just some of the things I heard and thought about that wasn't presented, and I just want to let you know, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Member Nelson.
Curiosity. Did you guys ever think about doing the 3D printing?
The 3D what?
Printing.
For this project?
Mm-hmm.
No, I don't think so.
Supposedly it costs 40% less to print a house. And I believe this gentleman...
Oh, that would be, that would be a question for the owner.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I mean, we're talking about cost and how it's, how it's related to the price that people are paying, and I'm like, wait a minute, and I'm looking at...
You're going into the 22nd century. The regrettable reality is the building department and the building codes of our state have yet to acknowledge the technology of our science, and so there are no codes that allow for what you've just described, but thank you for bringing it up. But I will tell you that the whole industry of manufactured housing, and I'm not talking about those tin ones that have wheels.
No, no.
I'm talking about buildings that can be actually built in factories and are better built than the site-built, they're coming.
This is, this is actually a concrete pad. They put the printer in the middle.
Right.
And it spits out concrete going around and around.
But in terms of the technology, it doesn't meet any of the engineering standards that you find in the code. It's, the code itself has not caught up to the technology. I really appreciate it. By the way, we've been building buildings offshore out of compressed dirt bricks that are denser than clay bricks. So you can make it from the material you'll find on the site.
That means we can do it.
So there's a lot of great ways to make big homes.
All right. You good?
Yeah.
Member Stokel.
Yeah, don't leave yet.
Yeah.
I appreciate all of the work that you guys, I can tell, have done with the community and the member, and the community members in the meetings, and then withdrawing the application or tabling it. I think this was already addressed with P&amp;Z's recommendations. I don't think you guys had any issues with those that I saw.
Correct.
And then, how was your last community meeting, would you say? Were there still some issues that you guys couldn't meet?
Well, there's, there's some, there's some people, at least one or so, that says they don't want anything there.
Okay.
I felt like that these...
Easy, hey, easy.
I felt like that there was less opposition, but most of the time in the community meetings, if you haven't been to one, people are concerned about the unknown, and so it's, you know, it's difficult to...
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right.
One, one other question.
That 10:30 is going to get here, and you're going to vote no. Vice Mayor.
You know the future, you're probably right, but Madison, what is down there? Madison?
Madison, Oak Park.
Oak Park. How far away is that from your development?
Is that the school?
Yeah, the schools, yeah.
Less than a mile.
Yeah, I would, over a mile would be my guess, yes.
So the kids will be walking to school. Yeah, so the kids will be walking to school. Yeah, they'll be walking.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Ten-minute walk, I would think.
Okay, thank you.
And he's right, they have sidewalks. That's kind of cool. All right, now, no more comments from this side. We will call the cards.
First card is Kay Sainton.
I'm Kay Sainton, Maryland Avenue. And I will disclose, I live about a half a mile from this proposed development. In the agenda's packet, staff expressed considerable reservations about this proposed project. Staff points out city's codes indicate a multiple-family residential development such as the cottages. Ninety-seven duplex units is incompatible adjacent to a heavy industrial zone property such as Brevard Lumber Company. Increased buffers don't resolve this conflict with current codes and set a precedence. Staff has also indicated the project is inconsistent with development in the area due to its density or intensity with ninety-seven units or nine-point-seven acres. In fact, staff suggests that a low-density residential land use of five units per acre might be more appropriate based on the uses and scale of the surrounding area. The average residential lot size within five-hundred feet of the proposed family development is one acre, definitely rural in tone. Many of these residents have lived on these homesteads since the nineteen-sixties. This project will generate six-hundred-and-forty-three average daily vehicle trips on adjacent roads, including Dixie Highway, which has no shoulders, no curbing, no sidewalks, and already is a danger to pedestrians, bicyclists, and children. The intersection of Dairy and US One will become even more dangerous to bicyclists and pedestrians trying to reach the nearby chain of Lakes Park. This intersection permits traffic to turn across the crosswalk when pedestrians have the right-of-way. I know, I ride my bike up Dixie and try to cross US One to access the park almost daily. The city of Titusville currently has approximately thirty-seven-point-seven percent citywide tree canopy. This tree canopy with as many huge heritage trees is part of what makes Titusville such an attractive community. Our tree canopy reduces our ambient temperatures, reduces stormwater pollution discharge into the lagoon, and provides habitat for birds and wildlife. But the sixty-six pending development projects in Titusville will reduce this tree canopy percentage considerably. Deforestation is a key contributor to climate change. Mature, large trees are far more beneficial than small immature trees as they absorb more pollutants, reduce more stormwater runoff, provide more shade, and store more carbon. This nine-point-seven heavily wooded acreage is part of a larger wooded area that extends north from Arthurdown Airport. This is the habitat of bobcats, bald eagles, owls, hawks, painted buntings, and other songbirds. I have one more sentence.
Yes.
This development would destroy wildlife habitat and reduce our quality of life here in Titusville and make it considerably warmer. For these reasons and many more, I ask Council to deny SSA Two, twenty-twenty, the cottages. Any questions?
Member Stokel?
Yes. So if this stayed community commercial, are you suggesting that it would preserve the trees more than this development?
I don't know what would happen if it was commercial.
And that's what I'm getting at. I feel like with our tree ordinance that we pass, whether it's community commercial or we do change the land use, that there will be still the requirement of the trees and the tree canopy. So I think that we would be preserving as much as we can while still, whoever's owning the piece of property, if it stays community commercial and they develop it, or if it does get changed, they develop it. We're saving some, but they're also doing something with their property.
I understand the question you're asking. But the staff did suggest a low-density residential land use of five units per acre. So I would prefer that than...
You're thinking that's more compatible and consistent with the surrounding areas?
I would think so, yes, indeed. I would like to keep somewhat of a rural flavor to the area. And I think that's what, I've talked with the other residents there on Smokey Lane, and that's what I've heard from them as well. So, and there is a resident here that lives on Smokey Lane that's going to speak tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kay.
I have one question for you, Ms. Kay. I'm trying to think, I know at Brevard Lumber, what else is out there as far as industrial, commercial-type?
Across the road from US One is the Palm Mental Health Facility.
But the only industrial building is the lumber police, right? There's nothing else industrial.
That's what is next door, yes. And that's what staff is referring to when it says that it's incompatible. As they're referring to the Brevard Lumber is right next door.
Just read what you said. You're saying about the...
Yeah, it says, "Staff points out city codes indicate a multiple-family residential development such as the cottages is incompatible adjacent to a heavy industrial zone property..."
Yeah, that's what I was looking for.
"...such as Brevard Lumber." And I took that from the agenda packet. I can't make these things up.
No, no, I just wanted to, I heard you say that, and I was thinking about Brevard Lumber. So I need an explanation of heavy industrial. Is Brevard Lumber heavy industrial?
The zoning is heavy industrial, M-two.
But Brevard Lumber is not heavy industrial?
It is, it is.
It is heavy industrial?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card, please.
Angie DeLuch Morales.
Name and address for the record, please.
Angie DeLuch Morales, I live on Smokey Lane.
Thank you.
And I apologize for my outburst.
You're fine, thank you.
I was just very frustrated at the blatant dishonesty that you guys were given. I have been at every meeting except for the planning and zoning last week. It was my birthday, I took the day off. And the very first community meeting that was held was during the middle of COVID shutdowns, and the room was packed to the point that the applicant complained about the fact that there were so many people there. And the majority of the people there were opposed to this. In fact, one lady was like, let's hold a vote tonight because the applicant informed the public if there was not community support, he would pull out. Second meeting, he made a couple of changes, brought us all back in. And when he was asked that question again, you said this, sir, are you still going to adhere to that? The community doesn't want it. He said, no, he's invested too much money, he can't pull out now. That's what happened at the community meetings. So I'm very frustrated at the fact that this nice presentation has been made in basically very dishonest manner. And I appreciate the items that were changed. Yes, we would appreciate those buffers. There are three homes there on Smokey Lane. But one of those is a lot that a gentleman bought because he wants to build a house there on an acre. There's agriculture on the other end that my brother owns, my uncle, all of whom were at this meeting that supposedly one person was objecting to this. And in fact, this, I don't have the original, I have copies of petition. I think I left it over there on my seat.
That's all right.
That was done in twenty-twenty after that first meeting. I don't have copies for anyone.
Okay, thank you.
Eighty signatures. And remember, thirty-seven cars went out. You'll need in here. So the reason the majority of the community is not here tonight is because we're worn out, honestly. And in fact, my neighbor who lives on Smokey Lane, who's been a very big pusher against this, told me, I'm not going. I don't think it's going to matter. And that's really sad because that's how we pretty much feel. We're not opposed to progress. We're not opposed to providing affordable living, but not ninety-seven units on nine, a little over nine acres. That's absurd. There is a nursery on one corner of Old Dixie and Dairy. There's two houses on the other corner that both have at least an acre in their lots. There's a small lane, Mimosa, that has four houses that are probably a quarter of an acre. The rest of us have larger lot sizes. That's why we moved there. I'm fifth-generation Titusville to that area. And I'm frustrated. Can I have one more minute, please?
Uh, I'm...
Please?
Yes, one more minute.
This is a map from S dot of that area from nineteen-eighty. Our concerns for the materials that had been dumped there many, many years, when I was a kid, there were cesspools of god knows what. And that's what that area is, it's circled there. And the applicant says that all those areas have been long, you know, left there. As of right now, if you go walk on that site, there has been asphalt by the mounds dumped on that property. We are very concerned of what gets turned up on that lot because the cement factory that was there was in the time of asbestos. So the historical area of that neighborhood would definitely be obliterated if this were to be approved. Again, we're not against progress, we're against ninety-seven units on that small piece of land.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I actually have a question for you. Calm down now. I was just trying to ask you a question here.
Sorry.
I understand where you're coming from. But I'm looking at all these names that are on here. And looking at the picture, there's what, three houses on the west side? I guess you call it this, the southwest side? So all of the names, I'm trying to figure out where all these, yeah, where do these people live?
They live around, at Bibbings is a block away. There's some that are in the neighborhood of Kay, about a half-mile away, all on Dixie. Some of them are down Dairy Road because they deal with the volume of the traffic that's there. So they're all in that immediate surrounding. The homes that are immediately affected, Smokey Lane and Mimosa, is a handful of people.
Right, that's what I was trying to get to, so...
I say immediately affected, I mean where I can look and see the development.
No, no, I understand. So can I make an assumption that most of the people are more concerned about the traffic that they assume would be on Dairy Road?
Not just the traffic, the character of the area. There's a reason that that area has been like that for a while because the people who desire that type of community either have stayed there, like us. You know, my whole family lives on that block, if you will. I mean, my grandfather, you know, would go up to talk to Gothy every day, you know? I mean, that's the community that's there.
There's going to be a buffer, a thirty-five-foot buffer off of Dixie and actually off of US One, too. Actually, you've got the bike path, which I use all the time, plus a buffer. So you think that with these ninety-seven homes, I mean, what would be acceptable to you? How many homes would be acceptable?
As Kay mentioned, four, five even. Okay, five, but just...
Five houses per acre?
Yeah.
So forty-five homes versus ninety, so half of it.
That's what we've been held, the standard we've been held to has been more than that. I mean, in terms of land, houses per acre. But us as the residents that are there, that's, would be more agreeable to us than to squeeze that many people on that small area of land. But that's just our opinion. And that's the same opinion for the people down Smokey Lane. I can't speak for Mimosa, but that is the consensus for Smokey Lane.
Actually, across the street from Dairy Road, there's a huge lot also, few acres.
Right, right against the cemetery.
Is that what it is?
Ultimately, ultimately, it goes to the cemetery.
Okay, all right, thank you, man.
Real quick, you talked about the character of the area. The fewer houses are not a problem compared to the larger number. Would that not affect the character?
Not as much. I mean, we would prefer it to be single-family residences, but we're not unreasonable, if you will, to progress. We know it's coming. But I mean, to what's there, I mean, you've got one-hundred-and-fifty-year-old homes, you know, feet away from that. You've got, you know, the first church in this entire area, feet away from that. Do you think that integrity is going to be maintained with all of that traffic, all those people moving in there? I just, I mean, look at Indian River Avenue in Titusville. It's beautiful, it's been maintained. You know, I just hurts my, I'm sorry, I'm very emotional. That's my family's land that's going to be, they've worked so hard to maintain that area. They weren't opposed to growth. They just wanted to maintain that. There's still agriculture land right there on Smokey Lane.
Okay.
So...
Vice Mayor again?
Yeah, not for you, actually, for Peggy.
Thank you.
If we didn't do anything, we didn't change the zoning or anything like that, what could be put there as far as housing is concerned?
It's currently zoned commercial, so there would be no...
You could have no houses there.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So just to restate that, if we don't rezone it, the only thing you could put there would be commercial buildings.
That is correct.
Parking lots with commercial.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, Member Nelson?
So Peggy, staff report said that they thought that low-density residential might be more appropriate. What would that be?
That would be five units an acre.
Five units an acre, okay.
I would just like to say that based on the floor-area ratio of the community commercial, you could have a build-out scenario of six-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand square feet. Based on the floor-area ratio, which is the intensity of commercial, you could have a build-out scenario of six-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand square feet of commercial on that site. You could put a couple Wal-marts.
Wow, wow.
Walmart, I don't think a Walmart's six-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand square feet. But now, that, I'm not saying that that is what will happen. I'm saying that is the potential based on the floor-area ratio and that much community commercial zoning.
All right, next card, please.
Steve Bridges.
Good evening, Council. Steve Bridges, Titusville. I don't have the salesmanship of the applicant nor the passion of the residents. But I have a concern, and I, as I said, or she said, we've discussed this, that you're going to put that many vehicles, six-hundred-and-forty seems like a lot less for ninety-seven units or whatever it is, for Dairy and US One. Prior to doing even a traffic study, you're talking about rezoning. The traffic study follows the rezoning, is that what I understood?
It will be required after the rezoning, yes, sir.
So cart-before-the-horse kind of mentality there. I think it ought to be done before you rezone. I don't think any, I think that even the residents are not opposed to lower density. But how many traffic fatalities have we had at Dairy and US One? I know that, I believe that's still in the county as an intersection, is it not? Or we got it now? Oops, sorry, city. There is one entrance, one exit right there on Dairy, as the applicant has stated. I just think the traffic's going to be quite a nightmare. I live within a half a mile of there myself and travel Dairy Road almost every day. So that's my input for you. We used to have to review these, as you know, at the Police Department for traffic processes and always came before, I believe, a rezoning. And now I hear it's coming after, so that does concern me. So, thank you.
Hold up, Vice Mayor.
I want to make sure I understood what you just said.
What did I say?
What did you say?
I don't remember.
I don't know what I said.
That's the wrong answer.
No, no.
I just need to understand, you are more concerned about the traffic, not the...
The density's going to increase the traffic tremendously, yes. The traffic, not just the traffic alone, but the safety involved with all of those vehicles, bicycles, walking. You're talking about crossing a four-lane road. I believe the speed limit's probably at forty-five there with a light. But again, how many traffic fatalities we had with the light? So again, I just think a traffic study warranted before you consider rezoning. And I think rezoning to a lower density is probably more appropriate.
So do you have a problem with the density?
I can't speak to the density. I don't live right next door to it. I just think the density's going to dictate the traffic.
Okay, aesthetically, would you have a problem with it?
Again, I'm just going to be driving by it. To be fair, I don't know if I could give you an aesthetic answer. I just think the traffic is a real concern for the people along Dairy Road and Dixie as well. I mean, I think the people that live there have already spoke to how many homes have been built on one acres there. I believe there's two currently that have been built, one on the corner and one behind it. And who knows what's going to happen to the property across the street on Dairy Road, for that matter. But I think higher-density housing needs to be in the same area as higher-density housing already is, whatever that means. I don't want to be a nimby here. I think the applicant has, I mean, the owners have the right to do whatever they want with their property within reason. But I think we need to take into consideration the safety of our residents and of those in the county as well, because they're our neighbors.
All right, thank you, sir.
Hold on, Member Nelson?
Well, I just want to point out that the speed limit in that area is fifty-five. And so you're going to be going out on Dairy Road. And I used to live in the area of actually, I don't know, two-acre lot of lawn mowing. That is an agricultural kind of area. There's a guy across the street on the north side of Dairy, maybe Dairy and Old Dixie, which is not that far away, and he's farming, so it is a very agricultural type of area.
Oh, boy. Let's, before I get into comments, let's call the next card.
Susan Naylor.
If I could, while this nice lady's coming up, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I've looked up traffic generation rates, which are higher for retail than for residential, and the estimate that I've come up with is there would be approximately at peak hour fourteen-hundred-and-eighty trips, as opposed to the six-hundred for the entire day.
Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Susan Naylor, and I actually live on Mimosa Lane, right there in Titusville. So this will actually very much directly affect my home. Again, I don't have a problem with smaller density level of residential, that's not a problem. But, so if you look at my property coming up, it's one block before Old Dixie Highway, which is in between US One and on that Dairy area. I know that I travel up to US One every single day going to work. The amount of families at ninety-seven units, that's gonna increase our traffic immensely. This is my very first home I ever bought ten years ago, and this is where I planned to stay for quite a while. And it's just, we, I bought this home in an area for more rural, and the idea of it being, you know, taken away by having such high density is very unnerving and very sad for me. So again, if we did something smaller as far as, you know, the four or five per acre that people were proposing, I'm completely fine with that. But again, it would really disturb the wildlife, add horrible amounts of traffic to our area. And again, my personal home, it's, you know, it would very much disturb me to see this happen at the home that I built, and not that I built, I'm sorry, that I bought, that I love, so, thank you.
I see no questions, thank you.
Thanks.
Next card, please.
Stan Johnston.
Next card, please.
Last card is Mary Sparr.
Back row, Mary. I knew I recognized you back there.
Yes, I don't like to sit up in front, Mary Sparr, Coco. The cottages is planned for heavily wooded site, and it's one of the first projects to be reviewed under our new tree ordinance. So I'm following it, and hopefully you're following as the project's coming under the new ordinance. Now, if you'll recall, preserving canopy areas is optional for multifamily. But if the applicant chooses to set aside at least twenty percent of the development area as canopy area, he can take advantage of some really good incentives. Now, canopy area are really important, is really important, because these areas have legal protection, so they will remain areas with trees in the future. Now, this applicant agrees that many factors make his project easy to comply with the optional canopy area requirements. He wants a quality project, no wetlands, no floodplain, he's got PD zoning, large buffers. He can find trees to preserve, obviously, and he should be motivated to save mitigation costs. But I believe there's a little problem. How can the applicant create an exceptional quality project, which I believe he's very capable of doing, if he insists on a master plan with ninety-six or ninety-seven units in a tightly ordered formation? A tightly ordered formation. Ninety-seven units seems to be too constraining to allow the applicant to design the layout around the specimen and heritage trees, or design around the natural drainage features for low-impact development, LID. So here we have an applicant who has a capability to create a project that would serve as an outstanding multifamily example of what can be done with our tree ordinance and LID ordinance, but one thing seems to be holding him back, in my opinion, the ninety-seven units. I urge you to either cap the units to a reasonable figure, or choose a low-density residential land use, which has been mentioned previously. It's five dwelling units per acre. In conclusion, Titusville has incentives in its new tree ordinance and LID ordinance to promote developing in harmony with existing trees and natural drainage features. Please lower the allowable number of units from ninety-seven so that the project can work well with these ordinances and their incentives. I hope that in the end, this development will be one that Titusville is especially proud of.
Thank you very much. And that was the last card, yes? Alright, thank you very much. I'm gonna throw a couple of my thoughts out there, and then we'll certainly have the, and counsel may do the same, and then can have the applicant come back in. I think it's a really good and needed project. I think that the costs that you mentioned, I think it was like a thousand, thirteen hundred, eighteen hundred dollars for one, two, and three-bedroom, is really incredible. We don't have that almost anywhere in this state right now. I think that you have potential for a very good canopy, your buffers are admirable. I have some concerns about the density. I think even in the beautiful pictures that you have of another project, I guess, it looks pretty, pretty close. But again, if it's, you're looking at apartment living, that's not that close. But if it's housing, regular old houses, we might say, gosh, that's really close. That's a lot of units in there for nine acres, ninety-seven units and nine acres, that number would get people to raise their eyebrows. But I have to say, we have a really, really important affordable housing need that this, well, ninety-seven units, would help to address. But I also have some concerns with the six-hundred trips. And I have to agree with what was spoken earlier, that it would seem like the cart's before the horse if we approve the plan, the zoning change, and everything that goes with it, and then say, by the way, we're gonna do a traffic study, let's hope that works out, too. Six hundred new trips over there is a concern to me, because I have been over there when Oak Park is starting school, and they have the drop-off line. And having been in education a long time, and actually just coming from an elementary school in Coco as an interim principal, the drop-off line and the pickup line is a big deal. I remember when we were dealing with The Grove, and they were getting ready to open a, I don't call it a daycare, it's more than that, preschool. We had concerns about the pickup and drop-off line, and the parking, and how that was gonna work, and we kinda had a really good defined idea before we went forward. I don't think we're gonna have that with how that's gonna work here. At Oak Park, and it's probably one of the busiest school corners, and certainly in the city. You've got Oak Park right here, and you've got Madison right next to that, you turn left down War Eagle Boulevard, and I can tell you the number of times, this probably won't affect the traffic here. But the number of times I've turned down War Eagle Boulevard, I'll, matter of fact, I'll be there for a meeting tomorrow, but without school, it's not as bad. You can get in the traffic jam on War Eagle Boulevard. So there's a lot of traffic in that corner, add the Publix and that whole area, no, Wind Dixie. Wind Dixie in that area, and there's a doctor's office right across from that. I think we just have to look at the reality of it all and deal with it, because we've got a really good project here. And we've got some, I think, traffic concerns, maybe more than anything else, and ninety-seven units and nine acres does concern me. So I've got vision on both sides of this. So with that said, Member Nelson?
I have to say, this is a project that I wrestled with.
It's a wrestler.
I really wrestled with it. As much as we need affordable workforce housing, and God knows we need it. But I, I mean, I look at it and I go, you've got industrial here, and then it's like we're jamming all these little residential areas over here, and then we have these big acres back here, and to me, that's just not compatible. When I read the report, I think Brad did the report, and he's suggested low-density residential as potentially something that would be more compatible in their area. And I understand that's going to add cost to it, so that's gonna make it harder to have that workforce housing kind of project. But to me, it's like, it's just more of a residential rural kind of area, and to put that many people next to an industrial parcel is, is just, to me, not compatible. So I think that's what I finally came down to, and then there's a problem the course of the traffic, and people going fifty-five miles an hour down US One. And I think I've almost gotten hit a couple times trying to turn from Dairy on US One. So I'm just not sure that it's compatible in this particular area.
Member Stokoe?
Yeah, both of you guys actually kinda touched on where I was going with this. Whenever I see us potentially changing the future land use map, I'm always looking at the surrounding area, because I feel like that's our role as being on council, is to make decisions that are consistent with the surrounding areas, consistent with our comp plan. And when I look at it and I see, in this, I can argue is going to be up for interpretation of what somebody views as compatible and consistent with the area, but for me personally, when I'm looking at it and I see, yes, you have the industrial, you have the commercial area, but you do have the residential with four units per acre. It's hard for me to say, okay, let's take that, and I know with the presentation, we were hearing, this is better than apartments, this is better than apartments, and you could argue that, but when I look at the surrounding area, I don't feel like that's where I'm being pressed, like apartments would even be a good fit there either. So that's my struggle when I'm looking at it, it's, I agree, I think the low-density would be much more consistent and compatible with the surrounding areas. When I think about people purchasing there, living, investing in that area, they're, they would have the assumption that this is going to be consistent, this is the area I'm willing to invest and purchase in, and for us to kind of throw in some other area that might not be compatible, it would be a struggle for me to do that.
City Attorney, I saw you line up, and I was going to get to you about now, anyway, because I think we need guidance on what we can and can't do when it comes to comprehensive plan and quasi-judicial.
Well, what I was gonna suggest is we do the rebuttal first, before we start forming a.
Well, and I get that, because, but sometimes a rebuttal is the last, last blow, might be the best thing, because I want him to answer my questions, too, and really, all I've done is put out my questions.
Before you tonight, first you're gonna vote on the land use, which is your legislative action of land use, and then you'll vote on your rezoning, which would be your quasi-judicial aspects. You have your legislative land use vote, based on consistency with the conference of plan, based on what you've heard tonight. And then, following that vote, you would move to your zoning.
I have a question, real quick.
Yep.
So this, just to clarify, this is similar to what we did with a recent project, is if the land use doesn't get voted in, we would, there'd be no reason for the rezoning, correct?
If you do your land use.
Correct, okay.
And if it's approved, of course, then you go to rezoning. If it's denied, you would then look at your zoning and ask staff, based on what happened with the land use change, would the zoning be consistent with the conference plan?
Gotcha, okay.
And the staff would address that, because there may be situations where it would or not.
Okay, that makes sense.
And then you would vote on your zoning.
Okay.
And when, you know, based on the presentation, the evidence before you, you could only vote on that zoning, of course, if it is consistent with the conference of plan, and you would look at your zoning criteria.
The first would be legislative, though, and that'd be land use.
First is your land use decision.
Alright, I'd like to call up the applicant or applicants, and you heard some good, some bad, and the ugly, and the traffic.
Thank you again. I started yesterday morning at three o'clock to catch an early flight, and I flew, came here from the airport, so I'm a little on the weary end, so apologies if I start to lose my consciousness in the course of this conversation. Couple of things just to point to you, we went to the first neighborhood meeting absolutely right, there was a very good attendance, I think it was forty-five people, if I remember the head count specifically. Good representation, by the way, and the petition was submitted to us prior to even hearing what we proposed. It was a submission, it was an opinion, without the benefit of a presentation. And so it always will be guarded, and always be fearfully latent with the worst of the possibilities that any request would impose. So I tell you that because there is fewer people here, and some of the people who were there that first night have actually come to us since then and acknowledged that we had done what we had asked them to do, so I wanna put that on the record for the sake of the conversation. In terms of sheer coverage, I mentioned it before, a duplex here is the same size as a standard house, physically, square footage-wise. Therefore, ten units at the acre, and smaller units, and five units at the acre with larger units, is the same coverage. The actual physical coverage is not a different issue. You know, if we could have more, less coverage if we had taller buildings. But we thought that was more inconsistent with the neighborhood than staying with the one-story profile, which was the character of the neighborhood. So I tell you that. Trees, who cannot love trees? And I would tell you, in the projects that I've owned, which I planted vigorously, that are now almost forty years old, they're forests. You know, the trees that are there were not there within the last, what, thirty-five years? This was a sandlot. And so they'll grow back, the ones that we do plant. We actually redesigned the courtyards from that first meeting, and it hadn't been brought out to you, but I pointed it out to you. Every one of those courtyards is an area of a fifty-foot wide by about a hundred-foot deep. That's a single-family lot in a lot of neighborhoods. That's the area between dwellings, that's an area of potential preservation. And I'll tell you, if there's a tree in that location, we're gonna work our heart to keep, in fact, we even arranged a sidewalk, so instead of a sidewalk in the middle, in the original design, it's a sidewalk that loops closer to the dwelling, so the center could be protected if there were trees in that area. So those are important issues. By the way, it takes about thirty years for the tree to be as tall as a three-story apartment building. It takes about ten years for the tree to be bigger than a one-story building, you know, and to shade the buildings. We'll want the trees, they're part of the value of the product. You're trying to build a humane environment, you have to have trees for the environmental reasons, but also because they make the place feel really very livable. So I'm, even though our character was somewhat impugned, and we were told that we had lied, I would take issue with that statement. We've always held the same thing, if the community did not want us, this is the community. We didn't say the neighborhood, we said if the community didn't want us, we would go, and we will. We're here to do a job. Could we lower the density? No, we can't, I'm sorry to say that. You answered the question, and wouldn't that be even more inconsistent with the inconsistency that the multifamily creates to the adjacencies? Wouldn't a lower density against industrial be even a more inconsistent statement in terms of land use? This is a transitional site, very tough one, no question about it. Last comment, fifteen hundred families are moving to Florida every day. You think you're not gonna grow? You're gonna grow. You want the growth to go where the growth has the best potential for improving the quality of life, not hampering it. This is a major highway, this is a major artery, this is a collector road. This is a commercial site, intended for things that could be far more intense, in terms of car count and everything. Six hundred cars a day, six-hundred-and-fifty cars a day, divided by peak hour flow, divided by the number of hours in a day, is maybe a hundred odd cars an hour at peak flow. That's less than two cars a minute. It sounds like a big number, but it doesn't translate down into something you could really take note of. That would change with a Walmart, wouldn't it? Yeah, you can see that. So I appeal to the sense of balance that it takes. I know it's difficult to oppose residents and friends, and I'm not asking you to do that. And we will walk away if there's no consensus here tonight. The landowner will continue to pursue the sale under the commercial entitlement they currently have, and time will certainly catch up to that current zoning. Thank you.
Hey, tell me, because we didn't really address that part, and I don't know that you can address that part, because we keep talking about the major highway. highway. And I'm talking about the other way. If you turn left on Dairy.
Right.
You've got three schools within half a mile. And Oak Park and Madison in particular, right next door to each other, will have car lines. And that won't be a 55 mile an hour place. That'll be about 10 mile an hour. And without a traffic study, I don't think we can really, really know. And I don't know that you can know, so.
No, but the, the reality is if you did the single-family homes, you would still have traffic too, wouldn't you? They'd probably be half the density, actually be a little bit. It wouldn't be quite half, you know, because single-family homes generate more cars per day than apartments do per door. But having said that, it's not a 600-car impact. Even at a lesser density, it's probably a 250-car impact over what could be done if you could go to lower density. And you certainly could do that as the authority in this case. It just would not involve us because that's not the core business that we can achieve. And we, we're struggling to make it work, given the considerations of the market that we've had to face. So we'll find another site in another town where the opportunity to do it is still there because it's everywhere. It's absolutely everywhere.
All right. Any comments, questions up here real quick? No, sir? Thank you, sir. All right. This is where Mayor Johnson would say, what's your pleasure? You remember that, don't you? So, Member Robinson.
Yes, as I understand the, I know it's quasi judicial, but with Peggy, is it what we are trying to decide whether we are willing to change the zoning or not? Is that bottom line?
The first question is, do you want to change the land use?
Change the land use?
Yes, yes, sir. It's currently commercial land use. And the question is, do you want it to go to medium-density residential?
That's the first question.
Yes, sir, that is the first question.
Do I have another one?
Well, that depends on how you answer your first question.
Okay. The first one, I don't.
In, in that case, then the zoning as recommended, I mean, the zoning, the PD zoning would not be consistent because there would be a proposal to put a residential component into a commercial zoning.
Okay, so I only have to answer one time?
If you answer no to the idea of the industrial, I'm sorry, the idea of the land use change.
Right.
Then the, the answer to zoning is no also.
Okay.
Correct. So you would have a motion on your land use, up or down? You would have first a motion whether to approve or deny the change in land use from commercial high intensity to the requested residential medium density. And after that vote, depending on that vote, you would have another motion on the zoning. As Peggy said, if the land use is not there, you would have a motion on the zoning. You could only approve the zoning if it is consistent with the conference of plan.
So if there's not any discussion in council, I don't see a name up just yet, then we would move to a motion for the land use change? So I would be looking for a motion for the land use change. Member Nelson, you have a comment?
Which is ordinance number 152022.
Okay. Member Nelson has a motion.
I would move to deny the change of, change of the...
Land use.
Land use to medium-density residential because it is incompatible with the industrial use next to it.
And again, that's ordinance number 152022.
152022.
Yeah, that's the first one, 152022.
All right, I'm a second for discussion.
I have, Member Nelson has made the motion not to approve the land use change. You guys got the specs on that. Vice Mayor Jordan, I believe, has a second with...
For discussion.
Vice Mayor has a second with discussion.
All right, just to remind the council, I was looking at what the P and Z did, and they approved it. And there were two people who didn't like it, and it really wasn't because of compatibility. Okay, I, I just want to understand that. The, the opposition for the sidewalk, I think the sidewalk is definitely going to be there. And HOA, and HOA didn't make any sense to me because they don't own the property for sure. It didn't make any sense at all. So I, you know, I, I must tell you, I'm, I'm at a little quandary here because I think we need this, really badly. I think it's a, it's a nice piece of property, but I also understand people buy certain property to be in a certain environment. And unfortunately, or fortunately, there's property there that could be used to help us with our workforce. And I was very interested in what the cost was going to be to, to people. I'd love for all our young people to, at one time in their life, be able to, be able to own a house. But I think those days are gone based on seven or eight times their salary, you know, to afford a house. I mean, I bought my house for $140,000, you know? And my dad thought I was losing my mind. He thought it was too much money. I said, Dad, don't worry about it. I could do it, you know? And that was 30-some years ago. And today, we look at it and you just can't do it. And so I'm, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to tell you now that I believe that we need to do this, and I believe we need to do it because of the necessity for citizens more than the citizens there. I totally understand you. I totally care about what you're saying, but I also care about those young people who need a place to stay.
Did you just second her motion to deny?
For discussion.
With discussion?
Yes, for discussion.
Well, there's a big difference. You seconded with discussion, which meant the motion got seconded.
Right, I understand that. But I still can do what I want to do. Yeah, but I just wanted to second for discussion, yeah, for sure. So that's where I am.
Okay, so I have a motion and I have a second. Well, not all in favor, not all in favor. So just to clarify, the motion is to deny. So if you are for that motion, you'll vote yes.
Correct.
If you're against that motion, you'll vote no.
Right.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Nelson? Mayor Diesel?
No.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
No.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
The motion carries the property, the land use change has been denied. All right, that's a tough one.
We need a motion on the zoning, please.
Well, I thought the last time we did that zoning didn't matter.
We had a motion on this ordinance, and now we have the rezoning ordinance which needs to be addressed. So as you asked Peggy, based on the action on the land use, what's your position on the zoning request at this point?
The zoning would be inconsistent with the current land use. So the, the vote would be to deny based on the fact that it's incompatible with the existing land use.
Just for the record, last time we had this happen at 5:00 in the morning, we...
Last time there's a motion is to the application, which included two ordinances.
It was the land use. The land use didn't pass, so there was no need, as we got it, to vote on the next one.
Last time, the motion was on the application, which included both ordinances. So far, we have a, a motion on one ordinance, not on the application. So we will...
So what is this vote? I mean, we just flipped the ball from two weeks ago.
Based on your motion. So now you have the rezoning, which...
Yes, the, the previous application had two ordinances. This motion was for one ordinance, so we need a motion on the other ordinance.
That's correct.
So what are we voting on exactly?
Right now is a motion as to ordinance 162022, which was the requested rezoning. Staff has told you that now the land use didn't change. So if the zoning can't change because that would be inconsistent with the conference of plan, you can't approve a development order that's inconsistent. So the motion would be to deny based on inconsistent...
We have no choice now but to deny.
But you need to make a motion.
Even, okay.
So...
So we need to do a motion to deny ordinance number 162022.
Based on?
Based on it being incompatible.
The denial of land use change.
Incompatible with the land use.
All right, I have a motion from Member Nelson.
Second.
I have a second from Member Stokoe. Roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
This is a yes, though, right?
Yeah, this is a yes, this is a yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Could be a misleading vote there, though, I must say. I mean, if it comes out that way.
Thank you all for the courtesy of your time.
Thank you.
Okay, on to...
Real quick, I hate to do this. We've gone too long. I've got to take a five-minute break. I have no choice. It's showtime.
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
All right, everybody, so Member Robinson, get to their places, please. He's going to get some candy. Oh, my goodness, I didn't even know she wasn't here. All right, here we go. Oh, Sarah, who are you talking about? You never have enough for all of us. All right, we are back in session. Call this meeting ordered.
And Mayor, Council, we are on ordinance, or item 10A, which ordinance in number 282022, and it's the first reading. The city attorney will read for the record.
Ordinance number 282022, an ordinance of the city of Tyusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances to remove a wild date palm, Phoenix Silvestris, as a permitted canopy tree by amending sections 30-393 landscape material size requirements at time of planting and landscaping technical manual, section 5.2, trees and shrubs, canopy trees, 50 feet to 100 feet HD, providing for... Providing for Severability, Repeal of Conflicting Ordinances, Uneffective Date, and Incorporation into the Code.
Staff, anything? Questions, Council? I see none. Cards?
One card, case in on.
Okay. There you go. Wait, not yet. Had it.
There we go. Case in on Marilyn Avenue. I recognize this as the first reading, but who knows? Maybe I won't be here for the second.
There you go.
So I'm going to talk now. All right. The University of Florida IFAS first detected lethal bronzing disease in 2006 in non-native Sylvester, Date Canary Island, and Queen Palms. Two years later, it was detected in native cabbage sable palms. To date, the disease is most prevalent in the central part of Florida, but is spreading and can be found in 36 different counties in Florida, affecting 21 species of palm trees. Please recommend approval of the ordinance as written to remove the Wild Date Palm, Phoenix Silvestris, from the Landscape Technical Manual's list of approved canopy trees. This would prevent the replacement of canopy trees with Sylvester palm trees. Palms do not provide the same benefit as native canopy trees. They do not sequester carbon at the same rate, nor provide as much shade to reduce temperatures, nor reduce stormwater as well as canopy trees, such as the live oaks for the University of Florida. The Landscape Technical Manual will still include a list of recommended palms to be planted if you do approve this ordinance. Palm trees will still be in there, including the lethal bronzing disease-prone Sylvester palms, Canary Island, and Queen Palms. But this can be considered at another time. At the moment, I would just ask that you, at your second reading, approve this ordinance as written. As always, it's best to plant native trees and palms to provide native wildlife habitat and food. So at a later date, hopefully, we'll address the list in the technical manual, all the palm trees, and give that due consideration. But right now, what is being asked is that you remove the Sylvester palms from the list of canopy trees. As you know, the law says if you remove a canopy tree, you must replace it with a canopy tree, and that's what has happened. But this would remove the Sylvester palms from the canopy tree list recommended. Thank you.
Very nice. And I wanted to say, and when I saw this and read this, I'm very happy with our staff and our council because we are, we listen and we're receptive. Because I can tell you, I had no idea about this until I believe you, and I think Laura Lee and some others, informed us of this, and now here it is. So I was really glad to see that. And I'm sure we'll do, I won't say what we'll do. But we will, we will see it again. Here we go, we will see it again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And this is the first reading. The second reading and public hearing is scheduled for the regular city council meeting on 9 August 2022. The Tysle Environmental Commission considered this ordinance at their 15 June 2022 meeting. Recommended approval as written. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance on their 20 July 2022 and recommended approval of this ordinance as presented 7-0.
Very good. Moving on to new business, I believe.
New business, we are on to 12A. This is automotive servicing and truck vehicle rental in the downtown mixed-use downtown sub-district. On April 26, 2022, city council requested additional information from staff regarding a citizen's request to allow automotive servicing and truck vehicle rentals in the downtown mixed-use DMU sub-district. Staff report and analysis is attached. Ms. Bousaka will provide any additional information that you may need. And what we're looking for is direction on what you would like us to do with this.
Ms. Bousaka.
The gentleman who requested this information is not here this evening. He essentially leased a piece of property and then wanted to do something that was not permitted under the code, which was auto detailing, and then he moved from there into truck rentals. And so he came back to this council several weeks ago and asked that you consider including those two uses within the downtown sub-district of the downtown mixed-use district. The staff does not feel that either of these uses is consistent with the character of the area and does not recommend that you move forward. However, the options are that you take no action, that you choose to have staff develop an ordinance relating to automobile servicing and truck and vehicle rentals in the downtown, or that you approve advisability to amend the code relating to either automobile servicing or truck and vehicle rental. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Member Robinson.
I am reading that and what we have talked about in, in the past, about what we want our downtown to look, to look like. I do, don't think that an activity such as this is compatible with the character of our downtown area.
That's a statement.
You good? Okay. Vice Mayor.
Yeah. Do you have a definition of what the downtown area character is?
Of the character of the downtown?
Yeah.
Yes, as a matter of fact. It is considered the heart of the district. It's predominantly developed as the highest densities, intensities, and heights, and it should accommodate retail offices, government, civic, and public buildings, along with a mix of housing types.
That's in your statement?
That is in the, actually in the code, Section 2844 of the Land Development Code.
Wait, I answered a question? I didn't hear anything about any of the other stuff in there, so.
Where is this downtown area specifically?
Well, there's a map on page 414, but it is generally between...
I didn't go far enough.
South Street and Garden Street, from the railroad track to the river, except for the downtown, except for the historic area, which is east of Indian River City, south of the Main Street.
Oh, I, I thought...
Because that's the historic downtown, but...
So it's not south of Gray Street?
South of Gray Street is the midtown area. And that we've already approve, or we, you've already approved car rental agencies in that area. You may remember, we did that without a conditional use permit.
They're working on that right now.
Right. So this is the area that's really, I think, much more the heart of the historic downtown district.
So the Save-A-Lot?
The Save-A-Lot is within the downtown.
I know, was that...
It's the, the property right beside the Save-A-Lot.
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry.
I'm asking, is Save-A-Lot part of the descriptive that you just... It is?
Yes, it's within the downtown, the downtown sub-district.
You're not answering my question.
Okay, I'm not getting it right. Oh! It is part of the retail, yes.
Okay, so it's retail.
Yes, it is retail. I see what you're questioning. Thank you for helping me.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Honorary Planner for the night.
Member Nelson.
The Gusfalk roof is off. The Jetson's roof is off.
Oh, yes.
Yes. And I would agree that this is just not compatible with downtown.
I think we're just advising. And I'm, I think I'm hearing that we're all opposed. I'm actually looking it over to see if it's really downtown. Is it out of the way? You know, I hate to say no to a guy that's trying to do his best to get things going, but he may need a different site. It does look awful close to the area. Oh, I see it, yeah. Yeah. Okay.
So the direction of council is to do nothing...
The direction of council is to not do that.
Okay. Great. Onto, onto item 12B, which is the proposed tentative operating millage rate. The city manager's proposed general fund budget for fiscal year 2023 is balanced at our current tax rate of 7.2145 mils. The millage rate of 7.2145 is 13.48 change over the rollback rate of 6.3573 mils. The request is to set the tentative millage operating rate at our current rate of 7.2145. In accordance with Florida Statute 200.065, the final adopted millage rate may be lower, but may not exceed the proposed millage rate. So staff is requesting council approve the FY 2023 millage rate of 7.2145 mils, which is 13% above the rollback rate of 6.3573. Set the vote, the vote debt service millage rate, which is the Riverfront Acquisition Referendum, at .2542 mils. And the maximum levy authorized by Series 2005 General Obligation Bonds set at .5930 mils. Additionally, we have to set the public hearings. And the first, the public hearings are scheduled for September 14, 2022, at 5:30 in City Hall. And the final public hearing will be set for September 22, 2022, at 5:30 in City Hall. And this will, upon your approval, the, it'll generate the trim notices that will go out to all the citizens so that they'll know what we're tentatively setting the millage rate at.
Very good, sir, I appreciate it. You guys are always ahead of the curve. I think it, I know everybody knows this, but this is a little different this year. And what we can do from here, the only thing we can do from here is go down. If we go down, we have to take something out. So it'll be a little, I wouldn't say trickier. It just takes us further down the road than we normally are in a first meeting. I, I kind of like this, quite honestly.
Yeah, and we were the only city that still did quite a bit above and then gave a lot of confusion to our citizens, so...
Well, it did.
This year, we, we think that this will continue in the future as the tentative millage rate is set. And then if the council chooses to change the budget itself, that will happen during the budget hearing process. And if you choose to go below the current, the recommended millage rate, you have the ability to do so.
I think this takes us into our budget hearings in our set lanes. And we know that if we change the lane, we're going to have to decrease something else. So I, I think that there's, I think we're further ahead than normal.
And your proposed budget books will, are being, Terry's getting them printed right now. We'll have them to you on the 29th of July.
Very good. Nice to see you there. It's been a new place. Um, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I wanted to make the motion. Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, you were quick.
No, I wanted, I wanted to make the motion right after. I didn't want you to talk or anything. Just say ditto to what the, the manager said so we'll have that as record. What he read is what my motion is.
That's all you got to say?
Okay. Is that okay? I have to...
I would make the motion.
Oh, my God, man.
It's not fun to make motions anymore.
I know. All right, Mr. Mayor and Council, I move that we set the proposed tentative operating millage rate for the fiscal year 2023 budget at 7.2145 mils, which is 13.48% above the rollback millage rate of 6.3573 mils. Set the voting debt service millage rate, Riverfront Acquisition Referendum, at .2542 mils. The maximum levy authorized by the Series 2005 General Obligation Bond is .5930 mils. Additionally, set the first public hearing for September 14, 2022, at 5:30 p.m. at City Hall, and the second and final public hearing on September 22, 2022, at 5:30 p.m. at City Hall.
I have the long motion by Vice Mayor. I have a second by Member Nelson. Before we go further, staff, is there anything you want to add to that? Want to give us a pep talk or anything?
No.
Just going into the budget...
I'm available for question if you have it.
Going into the budget, as you've all experienced, and we're all experiencing it now, our operating costs are up 32%. So it's, it's going to be a very challenging budget. Staff has worked diligently to put a budget together. So with property values being up 15%, it still doesn't really meet what we're needing to dig out of that.
But thankfully, they are up to 15%.
Yes, sir.
So, that being said, yes, I appreciate your words. We have the motion and we have the second. Roll call, vote.
Vice Mayor Jordan.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yeah.
Member Nelson. Mayor Diesel.
Yes, passes unanimously.
Item 12C, which is the utilization of the American Rescue Plan. This is our second amount of money sent from the federal government, totaling $4,303,596. We received that on June 16, 2022. Within your packet, we have a project descriptions that meet all federal eligibility requirements as verified by our external consultant. And the project descriptions are attached as part of your packet. Once approved, we will begin executing the second set of ARPA funds. And at your next meeting, we will have a summary of where we are at with the first round of ARPA funds. So we'll show you what projects we had, what we budgeted, and where we're at on those projects.
Okay. Nothing from staff? Are these questions or you guys making motions? Sorry, Member, Member Robinson?
Yes, just one question. I know, City Manager Scott, that it was a criteria that this had to be affected by something related to COVID prior to, I think it was March 31 of, of that year. Is that still a requirement?
Yes, sir, and as, all of our requested projects have gone to a third-party consultant that made sure that we have met the criteria as laid out by the federal guidelines. And we have.
Yeah. Thank you.
Member Nelson.
The only thing I was going to ask, and I mentioned to, to you the other day, is if we could move the farmer's market away from the downtown, or at least look at it, and maybe move it to a standpoint. Some of the merchants downtown were complaining because they felt like they were losing business. Did you get that, too? Yeah.
Do we have to rezone to do that? No rezoning?
No rezoning.
Certainly, they can look at that. We'll see. Anything else? Vice Mayor. Are you making a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, then, Member Stokel.
Sorry, real quick question. I forgot to ask in my briefing. So the farmer's market, we're continuing the same thing with the tokens and not adjusting it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then the food program? What is that again? The 25,000? On here?
Community Development Food Program.
Yes, I was just not sure what that was and if we'd done that before.
The food program is just that the Neighborhood Services restocking the Harry T. Moore Center food pantry.
The food pantry, okay, that's all. All right, thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
And I believe there's also a meal. We do community meals as part of that.
Still up.
All right, thanks. Mr. Mayor and Council, I move that we authorize staff to proceed with the second round of projects using the second, whatever that word is, transfer $4,303,596 in ARPA funds received on June 16, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor, second by Member Nelson. Roll call, vote.
All right.
That's all right.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan.
Yes.
Motion passes, well, not a motion. The, it goes unanimously.
And if I could just add a little bit, we, we did, and I think, Mayor, you've talked to other mayors.
Yes.
We still did people first, and then we did infrastructure. And the infrastructure projects that we have proposed with both rounds of this really have helped us to keep our water rates down. And you'll, I think, across the county, you're going to see substantial increases in those sorts of things. The, the projects that we've done with both clean water and water resources, we're able to keep those rates down to reasonably. I mean, you're going to see some big jumps in other cities' rates.
I'm sure you guys have as well. City Manager and I have talked, and certainly they have formulated. And I was pleased to be able to just be a part of it and say, that's exactly what we need to be doing. And that is put the money with the citizens... to be doing, and that is put the money with the citizens first. And I can tell you from going to a meeting with other mayors, that's not necessarily the case. Um, and I would just say that we have a different population than, say, Satellite or Cocoa Beach, um, not that they're a city necessarily, but even a Viera. So I, I think that the staff and, uh, city manager, and, um, I certainly had, gave my nod to it, put our citizens first, and if that means where we can keep the water bills down for our citizens, if we can have the, uh, food market, if we can fill the food pantry, those are things that some cities don't need to do, so they're doing other things with their money, and that's no hit on any other city. It's simply saying that we are definitely putting our citizens first before we do anything else with our ARPA money. Well done.
Well done.
Oops. And on to, uh, the final item, which is 12D. The Brevard County Property Appraiser has presented a cost-share proposal to the Brevard County City Managers, requesting cities contribute to a $2.4 million software upgrade of the countywide property appraisals GIS system. The Florida Department of Revenue has issued an unfunded mandate statewide to all property appraiser, appraisers to upgrade their obsolete GIS applications to a higher accuracy and efficient standard. The updated GIS application will be available to all stakeholders, including citizens, municipalities, and businesses. So what, um, it, within your packet shows what the county's contributing and what the property appraiser requested each city to contribute in order to accomplish this upgrade.
Uh, very good. Vice Mayor.
Yes. A couple of concerns with this. Number one, uh, since this is cost share, and they're basically looking, this is an unfunded mandate, and so they're basically looking for the municipalities to put in their fair share. The first question you have to ask, one, is suppose only two or three of the municipalities decide to, to do it. Uh, what does that mean?
Your fair share, go ahead. And it comes to unfair share.
Your unfair share, it'd be unfair share. So I'm looking at this thing, so it looks like the prorated portion is like $141,000 that we would have to do. And the second thing, is, is this legal to, basically, you're taxing your, uh, citizens twice. Is that legal?
You can only expend your municipal funds for a municipal purpose. So first, you would have to determine that this constitutes a municipal purpose for the use of your municipal funds, which you have taxed your citizens. Now, you'd have to also wonder, where is this gonna be in your budget?
Yeah.
So the first question is to determine whether you're actually achieving the municipal purpose.
I think this council's pretty set in that. I don't think that, I think that at the very least, we're unsettled, and, um, I think, uh, Vice Mayor's point is well taken. We don't even know how many cities are gonna go for this. We say yes, there's four of us, all of a sudden, the fair share becomes an unfair share. We'd have to know more before we could even consider that, so I, I would say at this point, I'm a no, um, because of the things you just said, and, um, you know, it, we don't have the information that we need, but I think the bottom line is, our folks would get taxed, basically, it seems to me, twice. So I don't, I, I think I do know how everybody else feels, but, uh...
No.
And you, Member Nelson?
No.
No. Uh, Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Um...
Oh, he's a maybe.
I, I think I had no rhythm of it.
Yeah, I think Vice Mayor kind of told us already. Uh, I think our advisement is that, at the very least, as I speak from my position, that I would definitely need to know more. I don't want to come across as, you know, not a team player, not a team city, we're not, you know, willing to work with the county. I would definitely need to hear a whole lot more about who's doing it, why we're doing it, and what benefits our, our citizens.
Yes, sir.
But with that being said, at this point, it's a no.
Okay. And on to Mayor, Council, and City Manager's report.
All right, I'm gonna start off real quick, 'cause I'm, it's short, but it's positive. Um, two things. I was, uh, I can't remember why, I think I had a meeting with city manager, so I had, I was up here and had my mayor polo on, and I also was having to pick up my grandkids because, uh, my daughter-in-law, my son, had their third child, so I had to go help get the two older ones out, 'cause they've been stuck. So I went and got them, we went to a movie, and then we went by La Cita, and there was about four or five people there who then realized that I was the mayor and came over, and I was just taking, you know, normally getting everybody to come up to you telling what a great job we're doing in this city. And it wasn't, oh, you're doing a great job as mayor, it was, we're doing a great job in this city. They complimented the police, they had, um, a, a time they needed, the fire department, they spoke highly of them. Um, they spoke like, you know, as you guys find out in budget hearings, I'm, I'm, love to pave roads, and the number of, that they love the paved roads, um, they, our trash department, it was just good to hear. I never knew these people, I don't know if I'll see them again, but it was like, wow, uh, we do have 50,000 residents in this city, and there's an awful lot of them that are very happy. The second thing was really kind of cool. Um, my son, as I told you, I think I said in discussion, my son just bought a house in Titusville. My middle son, Travis, who is, I'll guess, you start guessing when you get older, but I think he's like 35, 37? Okay, thank you. So anyway, he's lived in Orlando for a long time and, and taught over there, and he came to BPS the last few years, and he and some of his old high school friends went out in Titusville, which he just swore he'd never do, you know, not in Titusville. And he came back the next morning and, and said, "Your dad, I gotta tell you," he says, and he gave the names of the, the students who went through Titusville, and, uh, said they could not believe that this was the same Titusville that they left. There are things to do, they love downtown, and, um, you know, they love the, they love to visit the bars there and sit and chat, I'm sure. But there's just a lot of really nice, unique places down there, and I don't want to get into all the names of the places they went, but they're, 'cause then the people I don't name, mention, I'll get in trouble with. But they went to some restaurants, they went to a couple pubs, uh, went down to our bowling center, um, and, and even now, I thought, wow, you guys went there. They loved it. So I was really surprised to hear that, 37. He says, you know, "We had a group, about eight of us," and he said, "We certainly didn't think we'd finally end up doing Titusville after 11 o'clock," but they were, they were out having a great time, so I felt really, really good about that. So we're not that quiet little town east of Orlando, or that small town south of Daytona anymore. We are Titusville. Um, Vice Mayor?
Uh, yes, I, you know, I'm a very sentimental person, for sure, and I, I must tell you that, uh, I brought my dad, who's 88 years old, he's staying with me for a week, along with my sister, and it would be really nice if you all would just say out to him right now, "Welcome to Titusville."
All right, are you gonna count?
He's watching now, so, his name is Robert Jordan.
If not, I hope you're recording, he is 88.
Yeah, he's watching, for sure, so...
Well, welcome to Titusville. What's his name?
Welcome to Titusville.
Robert.
Oh, well, welcome. That's, that's kind of neat.
That's a hard name, I know it's Robert.
Welcome to Titusville, Robert Jordan, and, uh, your son does a great job.
Welcome to Titusville, Mr. Jordan. Anyhow, I appreciate you all doing that. My dad is very special to me, he's a loving man, and, uh, I'm really proud to, to have him down here for a week, for sure.
That's awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Member Stokel?
Pass.
Yay! Member Nelson?
I can say this in three seconds. Um, Pat Barnes started doing classes with law enforcement, Titusville PD, and she is teaching how to deal with stress, how to deal with family, how to deal with finances, because chief says if they get a big raise in October, he wants to make sure they don't blow it. So I think that's a great idea.
I do, too. Uh, Member Robinson?
Well, yes, what I have to report today is that I had the wonderful opportunity to visit out to our famous Osprey.
Oh, there you go.
One of the sweet out there.
And I, I'm going to tell, uh, no one on the dice, but I, I, I think that, uh, city manager, it was like, for me, it was like old home week. Have you ever been on a military base or a shipyard? That's the scent that you get off. And all of the pipes, the tubes, the color coding, that's what a ship is like. So just, um, that's, uh, it was great, and I love what they're doing, and thanks to the, uh, the, uh, the senator, uh, for the $500,000.
Amen. City Manager?
Um, just, uh, nothing for action items, but the first budget here, Budget Workshop is coming up, and it'll be, uh, on 16 August at 5:00 PM. And that will be, um, we'll have the complete staff here, and we've got the slide pack down below 100 this year, so it'll be, uh, good. Subject to your questions, that completes my...
Will we, uh, be up here, will we do the...
I'm gonna leave you up there.
Okay. Okay, thank you. City Attorney?
Just an update pursuant to your authorization, we filed that declaratory judgment with regard to the petition. Um, we just had a judge sign today. We'll let you know when we do get a hearing date, and as that progresses. I should have an update at your next meeting.